We wish to speak to any item on the agenda or actually during the public comment period. We do have speaker request forms. They look like this. They're to your left, our right. They're over on the media table there. If you please fill that out with your name and also the item number that you'd like to speak to. That way, as we make our way down the agenda, we'll make sure we do not overlook you. First thing, as always, is roll call determination of a quorum. If you would, please. Sherling?
Peterson. Wyffenbach. Davis. Hadcock. Kroger. Costello.
Here.
Quaker. Wa. Brown. Mason.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is our invocation. I'll ask Pastor Jim Sorum from Bethel Assembly of God to please come up and give us our invocation. If everyone please rise and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to immediately follow. Pastor?
Thank you, Mayor. God, we invite your presence into this room, and I know that you're here, and we just want you to know that you're welcome into our decisions tonight. And, uh, and God, I want to thank you for the many city leaders. I just came from a meeting down at Minerva's with a movement of city leaders and churches and convoy of hope and just reaching out to those that are disenfranchised. And now to come to this meeting and these people that just want to serve and care for this city. And, God, I just pray that you would be with them and bless them for their efforts. Just those citizens that are here tonight that are representing different areas of their care for this city, I just pray that a spirit of grace, a spirit of truth, and mercy, and love will just dominate this room tonight. So, God bless this night. And we always want to remember our servicemen as they serve in Iraq and Afghanistan and all over this world, and be with them tonight. I pray this all in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, for which it stands.
Injustice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Pastor. Next thing on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additional items that need to be added to tonight's agenda? If so, please turn on your light. Any additional items? Mr. Kroger? Coach Alderman, Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to add one item on the agenda under our council items, and that would be scheduling a 2012 meeting.
Very good. We will call that 70A, and that is scheduling of a 2012 meeting. Any additional items? Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd ask the council to move the bill list down on the agenda to follow the staff direction after the executive session.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any additional items to be added to the agenda? If not, the Chair will look for a motion to approve the agenda with two changes. The first change is a 70A, which is council discussion as far as scheduling a 2012 committee meeting of the whole. And the second item would be moving item 85 to follow staff direction at the end of the agenda.
No move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have the approval of the minutes for the January 18th, 2011 regular council meeting, and also the January 24th, 2011 special council meeting. We have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes. Seeing discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Under awards and recognitions, this is actually our off week, so all the awards and recognitions will be held two weeks from tonight. So, we will move on. We're on to the general public comment period. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken tonight at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. We have, let's see here, we have at least one, actually two, items for general public comment period. First one is Mike Murray. What I would do is, we do time this. You'll have three minutes. So, Mike, if you'd please come up, and you'll see a series of lights up here. And when it turns yellow, that means you have approximately 30 seconds left. And when it turns red, I'd just ask you to basically go ahead and finish up your remarks. With that, if you please identify yourself for the record, Mike, in the floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Mike Murray, and I reside in Ward Two. I'm going to speak to you tonight very briefly on a person that is very dear to my heart. His name is Ronald Reagan. And as you're aware, I don't know if anybody's aware, but last, yesterday was Ronald Reagan's 100th birthday. And I'm up here tonight to hopefully give us all maybe pause of the courage and the dedication and the service that this man has provided to our country. And I believe that a lot of us that are in public service or that are in elective office are there maybe because of him. And a lot of cities and states have signed proclamations and resolutions of dedicating the service that Ronald Reagan has given our country. And I kind of think that, you know, maybe we in Rapid City need to do that as well. And so, that's kind of why I'm up here tonight. So, I just want to thank everybody here for their service. And I just want to thank everybody for having the freedoms and the things that we do have in this country. So, thank you tonight for allowing me to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. We also have a speaker request form from adjacent, and I can't quite make otherwise. Is it Killian or?
It's Killian.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Couldn't quite read it. And there again, if you please identify yourself for the record, sir, and then the floor is yours.
Yes. My name is Jason Colleen. I reside here in downtown Rapid City. I have a concern that came into the news last week about $1.5 million, which was given to the development of Walmart down, or on, uh, on Catron. What raised a red light in my mind on this primarily was that we voted in a referendum recently to raise taxes on downtown businesses for legitimate city improvement. And then, without any democratic process, Walmart, which is a business which is large enough that if they really felt they needed to be here, wouldn't need any of our money, was just handed a million and a half dollars. This is a double blow to downtown. First, you raise taxes on downtown businesses. Then, you set up a, you hand over welfare to a corporation, which is a long legacy of destroying downtown businesses. So, I'd like it to be brought to order. I would like it to be put on the agenda for the council to re-discuss this. And to my approval, or, you know, my wish would be for that money to be taken away from them. I know they were in it, the initial thought was four million for them is what they really wanted. They ended up getting less than half of that. But still, it's far more than a corporation, which is wealthier than many of our world's nations, needs to move to Rapid City. We have a Kmart. We have a Target. We have ShopCo. We have a Sam's Club. We already have a Walmart. I don't think that overbuilding retail in this town is good for the people of the community, nor does Walmart do much more for a community than bring in a whole slew of minimum wage jobs, which is the last thing our community needs, is 100 more minimum wage jobs. At that, I guess my piece has been said. I would like you all to reconsider the decision that was made. And if they really feel it's valuable enough to move to our community, then they should be willing to foot the bill to do so. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just very quickly, Marsha, can you go over, since this issue has not been in front of the city council, can you just give us the timelines?
Certainly. The planning commission will be considering the proposed tax increment financing district on March 10th. We would anticipate that that would then come before the legal and finance on March 16th, with the council to consider it on March 21st.
Very good. Thank you. Can I get those dates again? Well, we'll get that. If you could just get with her, and then she'll get those to you offline. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everyone. I do not have any additional speaker request forms under general public comment period. We're on to the non-public hearing items. These are items 1 through 72, 1 through 72 inclusive. We need a motion to open the public comment period on items 1 through 60 inclusive, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. I do not have any speaker request forms on any item 1 through 60. Is there anyone in the audience that wish to speak to any item 1 through 60 inclusive? Now, the Chair will look for a motion to close the public comment period on items 1 through 60 inclusive.
No move.
Thank you. We have a motion and second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar is made up of items 1 through 54 inclusive. 1 through 54 inclusive. We'll be taking those up collectively in one vote. Chair would ask if there's any items 1 through 54 that need to be pulled from the agenda. The Chair has items 6, 28, 31, and 40 at this time. Any additional items? Please turn on your light. Let's go to Alderman, Sam Quaker.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, thank you. Any additional items that need to be pulled from the consent calendar, the items 1 through 54 inclusive? Seeing none, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendars, item 1 through 54 inclusive, with the exception of 6, 22, 28, 31, and 40.
No move.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman, Sam Quaker. Did you have another item?
Yes, the motion maker would accept a friendly amendment to remove item 31.
Six and 31 are the same one?
That are the same. That's fine.
Okay, very good. So, Chair will look for a motion to approve the consent calendar items 1 through 54, with the exception of 6, 22, 28, 31, and 40.
No move.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're on to the Public Works Committee items, item number six. And Alderman Quaker, who is our Chair of our Public Works Committee, could you please read that in?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number six is to acknowledge a report on update on St. Joe Investments LLC yield to the floor.
Okay, could we get a motion, please? And then we'll have some, we'll have Jason report.
Move Ignorance.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Mr. Green. I think there was a question that was asked when you were in peer, and that is, what is your recommendation? Do we need to actually, as a council, make a motion to extend the period? Do we need to formally do that? Or what is your recommendation?
There was not a request from the developer in this case to vote on an extension. So, I don't think it's necessary at this point. If the council wants to take a vote one way or the other, I think you certainly have the ability to do that.
And is it, you're understanding that the applicants are going to be back on, at the February 22nd city council meeting?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay, so maybe that'd be an appropriate time to ask them exactly where they're at? Okay, very good. Further discussion on that motion, let's go to Alderman, Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When this first came up, and we didn't, there was no motion to extend or anything. We were looking for financing in place on this item. And we were told by the mayor that the following Friday, there would be an update on the financing letter, which I, I haven't seen anything of. Is there something different that's happening now? I guess I'd either send that to Jason or the mayor.
Okay, I think I can answer that. Actually, my comments were that we were hoping to get a letter as soon as possible from the applicants, as soon as they had that worked out with the banks. I don't believe there was a specific timeframe. If there was, my apologies. But I think that that's exactly where they're heading. They're working on basically getting a letter drafted from their, their bank to come back and demonstrate financial obligations. Jason, do you?
That's my understanding of one of the.
Originally, that was our December deadline. And then, I mean, I think that's why this item's back on. I think there was a little bit of confusion on what was really transpiring there. I don't have any better alternatives. So, I guess if it goes forward, I guess that's fine with me. But I just wanted to make sure we're in a loop on this. And there's also changes. And will that, will we be updated on that, Jason? Mr. Mayor?
Jason, I think the question was, if there's any changes to the original proposal. And I think the answer to that, and Jason, correct me if I misstate this, the answer is absolutely yes. As a matter of fact, I believe Alderman Hadcock specifically asked for an update on the 22nd to include any changes to the proposal that was given about six, eight months ago. So, I believe on the 22nd, they will give you a complete.
Yeah, and the reason I bring that up is I got a call tonight from some of the other parties that were, were, didn't get this project. And they were, had, they had concerns about the fact that their project may have been extenuated because it didn't meet the criteria we wanted to. Now, if we have changes, I think it's very appropriate that we understand what those changes are. I mean, it's, you know, like I said, I don't have any better alternatives at this point. But at some time, this has been going on for years. May, you know, we just need to make sure that we're, we fully understand as council what we're talking about. Because we, we vetted these projects on their, on what they were at the time. And we looked at both projects, and we decided on one project versus the other project, one person gets the bid, now the project changes. So, I just want to make sure that those concerns are on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good comments. Let's go to Alderman, Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a quick question, just for clarification purposes, from our city attorney. The last line here, and the letter that you gave us, read that in the absence of other direction from the council, your office is continuing to work with St. Joe to move the project forward. I'm, I'm just hoping to get some clarification on exactly what the, what our current city attorney's office is doing and working with the St. Joe Investment Group, and how that's being moved forward without, in the absence of other direction.
Okay, let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure the council will recall that the master developers agreement that was originally presented to the council for approval contemplated additional agreements beyond that particular document, so that a number of details could be worked out. So, what my office will be working on is preparing those additional agreements that will finalize the land transfer and ensure the city that the, the interest of the city is adequately protected. So, as we move the process forward, my office will be working with council for St. Joe to get those documents prepared for review and approval by the city council.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Green. I just want a bit of clarification on that as I recall a previous transaction, that there was an absence of direction. And I just want to make sure that city attorney's office and the council are on the same page on where we're at with our direction, given, as eloquently stated, there is an absence at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. For the sake of discussion, I would like to offer a motion to draft a letter to the St. Joe Investment Group that at the, the meeting on February 22, it is the expectation of the council that proof of financing be delivered. And if unavailable, St. Joe Investment Group needs to make a request for an extension. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I don't, we'd be more than happy to pass that along if that's the intent of the council.
I would like to, I think we should have a discussion on that if I could get a second.
Do we have a second, please?
A second.
Okay, further discussion. Okay, we, we are acting as, this will be a substitute motion. Substitute motion is going to be to draft a letter specifically to notify that the 22nd is the date that they need to come back and present to the council. And Alderman Quaker, if, I'm going to probably elaborate, but if, if I missed the, missed the target here, let me know. Not only on the, on the identification of financing, but also a presentation showing exactly what the current proposal is, all amenities. Would that be fair?
Fair.
Okay, very good. Everyone clear on their motion? Okay. With that, let's go to Alderman, Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess that would be appropriate to be able to, if it was in writing, then they would clearly know what they expect from us. There would be no absences of, of non-votals or whatever's confused the council up here. So, I, I think I could support that. So, as long as they know if we deliver these items, then, then they'll know when they come to the meeting, what, what's their expectation. So.
Very good. Additional comments? Let's go to Alderman, Deb Hadcock.
I think at this point, having it in writing, I think they know what the expectation is. I think at this point, if the financials and the plan is not feasible at this time, I think at that time, there will be decisions made on it. I don't think you have to, again, do a letter and do extra work on something that I think they know. They know from legal and finance. They know from the city council meeting what those expectations are, financials. And when we said that, we said that in details. We want to know if you're using the TIF, if you're using that. So, if you want to draft a letter, let's draft it for the details of what we're thinking then. Let's do all the details of what this council is figuring out for this expectation. It's not just a simple financial and, and they already know that, the financial and the basic plan. So, if you want to draft a letter, I would say to detail it on everything that we want to know and put that in writing. Because they already know the other stuff. And I think if you're any kind of business person, or this council knows at that point, we're granting them another extension. That, that's supposed to happen on February 22nd, if it does, or if it doesn't, based on those two things that we already said. So, we can make more work for people. I know you can put it in writing, and sometimes they're not signing it or anything. So, that doesn't mean that they're going to come back with those expectations unless somebody here, again, wants to put exactly the details of what this council wants. And if they're going to do, if we're expecting to do that, I'm willing to do it. Otherwise, I think they know what we're expecting for the bottom line on this plan.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Aaron Costello.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just like the record to reflect that we abstaining from this item. My employer is involved in the design of the project.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Alderman Hadcock. While I absolutely agree that publicly it has been more than received by not only the general public, but I'm assuming also the developer, but as I stated, I'm assuming. In my experience throughout my life, unfortunately, and I wish this isn't what the, wasn't the case with the many transactions and dealings that I've had in my life. However, I have learned the hard way that putting it in hard black and white ink in writing is one of the best forms to conduct business for the sole purposes of having a document that one can reflect upon later on down the road. I think that's also the beauty of having our council meeting minutes and many of the various instruments that governments use today to put it in black and white is for this very reason. So, I do support this for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to draft a letter to Saint, let's see, let me get the right title here, St. Joe Investments LLC. A further discussion on the motion. So, to Alderman, Deb Hadcock.
Again, is there going to be a couple council members working on this for what they expect for the details? Because I think it would work out better. It's nice to draft a letter. But I would think that would be nice that we would have council expectations instead of guessing that we're saying financials and project plan, because you can do anything with that as well. So, I would say, what are you expecting them to come back with in detail? Because in writing, if you're wanting it in writing, and you want a business plan, that should be detailed, not just two things that say a couple of things that we have been putting on those drafts before. So, again, if Mr. Quaker and Mr. Jordan would like to work on that, or, or have me help them, or whatever, I guess I would like to know, if we're drafting this letter, is it, can I ask Mr. Quaker?
Sure.
Is it so we have the details and, and we can work out basically what we're expecting from this group?
Alderman Quaker, would you like to answer?
Sure.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. My expectation for the, the letter is very simple, is that if the developer comes on Monday night, and they do not have the, the proof of financing, then there needs to be a specific request at that time for another extension, so that we don't end up in a situation where the developer says, well, things are, are headed in the right direction, and we'll have proof of financing in September. So, basically, that's what I'm looking, looking for, is if we need to have another vote on another extension, then the developer needs to request one. And as of the 22nd, we should have the proof of financing available to the council and the community. So, very short letter.
Thank you, Mr. Quaker.
Still on the floor, Deb?
I guess proof of financing would be, I have 2.8 from the city. I have, I mean, like I said, what kind of proof of financing are you talking about? Are you talking about all of the financing in order? Or just their expectation of what they're coming through with? I mean, that's, that's what I'm asking. Because they could say, well, we got the 2.8, we got this, we got this, we got this. But, and that's all, do you, do you understand where I'm going, council, or am, you're not getting this? If you're doing a business plan, and you want proof that you're going to extend this letter, I might, people might not get that the extension is on many financing, which is a TIF, 2.8, getting the land, and if they have their money, the rest of their money, and if their plan, if it's changed. If that plan has changed, does this council want to move forward with other people having the same plan, and those guys ending up doing something that was going to be done in the first place, and could have been done cheaper by a group that could have done better on it? So, what I'm saying is, what is your detail? What is what you want, except for an extension? When I'm looking at something, and I'm looking at a business plan, what are you asking? Because if the public knows this, if we've got it up straight, and we have the business plan, and that's what we're expecting, these people will come forward with those expectations, and so will this council. So, I'm asking not just for an extension and a simple finance, I'm asking for the details. A letter should be drafted in detail of what you are expecting. That's what people want. That's what your public wants. That's what the business community wants, to make sure this project's going through. If that's the letter we're, we want to do, we should get together as a couple council members and get that done. Not just a simple, we'll, we'll extend this. Because we've already done that three times. Three times we have extended this, and we haven't asked for details. So, at this point, I think details are everything on this. So, if we draft this letter, Mayor, how do we do it so we can get the details on what the expectations of this council are? Because I don't, I don't want to keep coming back with people adding more stuff to it if we, if we can't just get it right the first time.
The appropriate way to do that would be to ask the city attorney's office to draft a letter, bring it back to the next legal and finance committee, onto the city council. But that sort of defeats the purpose, because you're, then you're at the next city council meeting, and they're going to be there to make a presentation anyway. I mean, that, in theory, that's, would be the most appropriate way to do it.
So, bottom line is, we're going to draft a letter, maybe a couple of us can get with the city council, ask the other council members, basically, and get this in detail, what we're all expecting.
Typically, there is one, one of two ways this typically happens. That is, you direct staff to draft something without the council's review, or you ask them to draft it and bring it back, which is the more typical route. And that would require that it actually goes through the process, through legal and finance of the city council, before it's actually mailed out. So, I mean, there's, there's two ways to do it.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess that's where I, we're already asked them to do financing. We already asked them to do, sorry, my five minutes is up.
Yep.
I apologize.
I think we got the point.
So, why are we drafting a letter? We're not asking for details.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Dave Davis, who has not had the opportunity to speak yet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some of the same sentiments, I guess. The first of all is that, what are we really looking for in this letter of proof? Are we looking for a letter of interest? Are we looking for a letter of commitment? Far difference than when you talk to a banker today. Are we looking to have all of their paperwork finalized and have the deal closed? Far yet different. We, we keep talking about proof of, of financing, and yet, I don't know that we're being honest with ourselves on, on what a financial institution is willing to do today. Some of the bankers that I've talked to about projects like this, just in theory, quite frankly, they're very leery to go public that they're on the line until the paperwork is completed. They quite simply don't want the public input telling them that they should or shouldn't be part of a project like this. They want to weigh it on the merits of whether it's a good financial program. So, I, I think, I, I think we're asking some things of, of this developer. And I'm, I'm not trying to run this past because I have a, an interest in this particular developer. I'm simply saying, I, I think we need to be honest with ourselves. What are we asking this letter to do? And what are our expectations of the letter? And then, the, the second side of the letter is, or What are we going to do? Going to write them a letter? Or else, what? What happens if they don't have that on the 22nd? You know, we've talked about, well, then they have to ask. If that's what we're doing, if we're sending them a letter that says, this is what our expectations are, and, and we expect that if you don't meet them, this is what the result will be, I think we need to stay that in the letter. I think the letter needs to be all-inclusive, what it is that this thing is, is all about. And the third part of that one, very simply, is we're, we're treating this as though we're in a, a point of negotiation. Is there an alternative out there that I'm not aware of? Is there an alternative out there that I'm not aware of? Is there another group out there that wants to put the same kind of a package together that hasn't, that no one shared that with us? You know, is this, I mean, why are we pushing somebody into the corner when we don't have someone to complete the project? It, it hasn't cost us anything today, other than time, and, so, I mean, if there was somebody else out there that wanted to, to take this project and run with it, I would have a completely different attitude. But, but until then, I guess I'm, I'm much more patient. So with that, I guess that's, that's really where I'm going, is if you're going to draft a letter, make sure that you, if you're, if you're going to write one to them explaining it, make sure it's got some teeth, and we know what it, what it's about. And don't ask for something that you might be sorry what you get. Thank you.
Okay. Just a reminder, the motion on the floor is to draft a letter. So if we could try and keep our remarks a little bit closer to that. Let's go to Alderman, Jordan, let's see, I'm going to go to Alderman, Ron Wyffenbach, I don't believe he's, he's had the opportunity to speak on the substitute motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think part of the issue is here, this has been an ongoing, long project through maybe several council people have been involved in it, so the history of it is, is maybe somewhat murky in itself. Do I have an alternative? No. But I got, when, when this first came to the council for consideration on the second time around, the only reason they came back is because the other project had died, the community came together, this, this particular group and another particular group came together and said, we want to relook at this project, we relooked, relooked at both projects on the merit of what they showed us on those projects. Then there was timelines put in place, and I got to agree with Mr. Davis on a period, on, on one thing, we don't hold anybody to any timeline around here. We don't put any teeth in anything in here, and it's, it's high, high time that we do it. If this project doesn't work, for whatever reason, if, if this group can't bring the project together, then just tell us. If the other group couldn't get the project done, this group can't get it done, and someone just needs to tell the city, they need to go out and talk to somebody else, or see what in the community can be supported down there. If it doesn't cash flow, it doesn't cash flow, it's simple as that. I mean, when, when this came forward, there was a short timeframe, a short window for the financing opportunity. I think it was pretty clear what we wanted at that point, we wanted them to come forward with a commitment, that they had the financing in place to go through this project, with this project. There's nobody, I mean, you look at it from both sides, the bank's not going to commit, but neither is the developer going to commit, if they don't have the bank commit first, it's what came first, the chicken or the egg. In this case, I think we wanted to clarify that, and there was a short timeframe, and I, at that time, made, made the motion, you could check the record, to extend the timeframe so we wouldn't have this problem. Well, as I was told by the other developer, you're going to have this problem, guess what, now I'm facing this problem, just like he told me. He said, this December comes along, there's going to be nothing in place, you guys aren't going to approve nothing, you're going to extend it, da-da-da-da-da-da. Well, here we are. He was right. And if he's watching tonight, you're right, and I'm sorry. So let's, 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 let's call it what it is. If it's, if the project's moving forward, it's moving forward, if it's not moving forward, it's not moving forward. If we put it in writing, that's fine with me. But at the same time, I do agree that there should be alternatives, but the problem is, there won't be anybody out there looking for alternatives if they don't know this project's not going forward. I mean, I wouldn't, and I don't think anybody else would, so that's my two cents, whatever it's worth. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. The comments made are definitely well-received on this end, that the devil, as the expression goes, lies in the details, and I think that's a very good point. And I also would take Alderman Davis's point on what exactly we're looking for. I think it's clear, but I will state it, we are looking for a commitment with backing. I believe the expression of having teeth has been mentioned here, and I think it's adequate for something that has been drawn out with $2.8 million of city funds, going back, as, as Alderman Wyffenbach pointed out, going back for quite some time now. We do need to protect the interests of the taxpayer at this point, and I thought the comments about the financial institutions being leery of making commitments is a good point, in that we can use that as a litmus test to see whether or not this is a good investment for the city. If it's not a good investment for the banks or other commercial investors for capital ventures, then maybe we should consider that. Maybe we should consider and take time to look at, from the perspective of a commercial developer, would we invest in this as if we were a financial institution? So going to the second point that was brought up about the expectations, I think the expectations of the city are very clear, we are looking for some proof of commitment with the financial and capital venture backing, in order to actually make this a viable, functioning project. And lastly, the determination of the what else, or what if they don't, I think at that point, if they can't produce that, I think it would be a fair point to say that this has been going on for quite some time, and I will unfortunately be the one to step out here and say it, I think it's a fair point that at that point, maybe the council should step back and ask the question, and make a determination of, if the financial institution isn't willing to make a commitment, then are we going to continue to make the city's commitment on this project? I think all we're asking for at this point is, we want everyone to come to the table and say, we're in this to win it. If we're not, then there is a point that maybe we should cut our losses and walk away. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to draft a letter, and make sure that gets out. Seeing no further lights, all is in favor, sign if I was saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. I'll make sure the letter gets out tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon with Alderman Costello, if you'd make sure that it's noted that he did abstain. Thank you, everyone. Item number 22, Alderman Quaker, if you'd please read that in.
Item number 22 is to approve authorized lowering the percentage of work that the general contractor must perform, from 50 to 35% of the Jackson Springs Water Treatment Plant construction. This is a CIP project, and I move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion, let's go to Alderman, Sam Quaker.
Thank you. The concern that I had heard, and hopefully that this addresses the concern, is, is that local contractors would not be able to bid on this project. Robert, do you have an idea of how many local contractors would now be able to, to bid versus who would have been able to bid before?
Robert, can you give us an update of the discussion with the local contractors?
Yeah, I don't know that I can answer that specific question about the number of local contractors that could bid, but maybe what I can do is go over what some of the specification changes that we made after listening to local contractors, and that might give you a better indication of that. Again, we lowered the requirement for the general contractor to carry 50% of the total project to 35. I think that will allow a number of contractors to bid on the project, local ones. We've also lowered some of the financial responsibilities. The, the contractor, either through their own work, previous work, or work that they've done with a joint venture firm, has to have completed at least three projects, projects of $10 million or greater. We have some performance and bond requirements, insurance coverage, that's pretty standard for all construction contracts. And then experience with similar type projects, we're asking the contractor to have experience with water treatment plants in the past, specifically the submerged membrane treatment plants, and having done at least two projects of this type, with one being 4 million gallons or greater. Now, our plant is going to be an 8 million gallon, so we're looking for something about half the size of what we've done before. But in lieu of that, we're allowing the general contractor to be able to team up with an individual or another firm that has experience with submerged membrane treatment plants in the past. So that will allow any local contractor to team up with a firm that has done this work in the past, or an individual who has experience of this nature, to be the general contractor. So in essence, as long as they've done $10 million worth of construction contracts, and they're able to team up with somebody, they have that ability.
Say, Robert, have you had any further concerns given to you after our meeting with the contractors?
No, I haven't. We did meet with local contractors, they brought their concerns forward, we modified our specifications, sent them out to all of those people who had attended that meeting, and asked for any further comments. Have not received any further comments. I think that does address their concerns. I will say, though, that this would open it up for local contractors, as well as contractors across the border in Wyoming, Montana, and Nebraska, and North Dakota. So it opens it up for anybody, not just people here in Rapid City, so you need to be aware of that as well. And the other thing is, this is a very complex project. I mean, water treatment plants are almost once-in-a-lifetime projects in a community. This type of a water treatment plant, I believe there's only one other facility like this in the state of South Dakota, so it does take some technical expertise. This is not like building a CSAC building or some other structure. These are very delicate systems that do require some technical expertise.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Quaker, you have a voice.
Thank you. And so there's, there's two plants involved, this is the 8 million gallon plant, and this one would be located...
Jackson Springs.
At Jackson Springs. And then our plan would be to start the 32 million gallon Mountain View Treatment Plant after this project is completed, so that we could again have a good contractor's pool.
And that will be a separate contract?
That will be a separate contract.
Okay. Could you just send out the, the list of the, the time, the timetables, again, to the, to council members?
Sure. I will let you know that it's advertising right now, we'll be opening bids in March, so.
I think he's looking for a timetable, not only of the current one that's moving forward, but also on, on the Mountain View.
Very well, yes.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman, Deb Hadcock.
I'd like to thank Robert on this, because he's not only done this on this project, he's done it on other projects to help out local contractors to be able to bid on our projects, and with the expectation of 50%, they haven't been able to. So the bottom line is, Public Works has looked out for the people of Rapid City and the people of South Dakota, so I'd like to thank Robert on Jackson Springs and other projects that this had to happen, for the, for city council to come back and change these specifications to 35% or, or different specifications. He's been looking out for the people of, of South Dakota or Rapid City as well, so we appreciate that, and there's more projects to come, so he's done a great job. Thank you, Robert, and your team.
Thank you. Further discussion, seeing no further lights, motion on the floor is for approval. All those in favor, sign if I was saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Onto item number 28 in legal and finance. Alderwoman Hadcock, could you please read that in?
Thank you, Mayor. 28 is approved application for sidewalk vending license for John Ashley, and I move approval.
Do you want to continue this?
Are we supposed to continue it, sir?
I believe the discussions, we're going to continue this for two weeks. Is that correct, Jason?
Continue for two weeks?
Well, I, my apologies, I'm going to, I'm going to let whoever wants to make the motion go ahead, my apologies, out of the discussion. Okay, the motion on the floor is for approval, and there was a second.
Okay.
Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman, Bonnie Peterson.
Yes, thank you. I would like to make a substitute motion, that we continue this for a couple, two more weeks, so that we can further investigate some issues that have been brought forward.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this item for, it'll be two weeks and one day, just so you know, because we have President's Day following in there. It'll be the next city council meeting, which will be following on a Tuesday. Discussion on the continuation motion, please. Let's go to Alderman, Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When this came up at legal and finance, there was no, I mean, I guess, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Green.
Go ahead, please.
Jason, is this, is this item not go through the process properly? Is there issues that I don't know about, or?
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as I know, it went through the process properly. I think there has been some information presented to some city council members about some concerns, and I think that's the reason for the request to continue.
Does Mr. Ashley know that this is continued?
Mr. Green.
It's not actually continued until you vote on it, but I believe he is here in the audience tonight, so I, I believe he'll be made aware of that.
Is, is, can I, Mr. Mayor, can I ask him a question?
Absolutely. If you'd just remember, the motion on the floor is to continue.
Yes.
Mr. Ashley, do you have any, do you understand why we're continuing this tonight?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, you have a voice, sir.
If it would be so kind, if somebody would explain to me.
Would you like to ask that of Alderwoman Peterson? She made the motion.
If she was so obliged.
Bonnie?
There was, I received an email today questioning if this would be a... Trying to be delicate here. If this, there's just some questions raised, and I would appreciate a couple more weeks, just so we can look into the issues that were raised about if this gentleman should have the vending license.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Okay.
Mr. Wyffenbach, go to the floor. Question for Mr. Green.
Go ahead, please.
I'll just kind of repeat the same question in a different format, is there, is there some objections? This came to legal and finance, and I'm, I guess I would so oblige somebody of continuance if there's good reasoning, and I think if I'm going through the process as a constituent or a citizen of the city, I would like to know why.
Mr. Green.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think there probably is some information that the council would be interested in, in knowing about, and you can certainly evaluate that information once it's provided and make a decision.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Anything else, Mr. Wyffenbach? Let's go to Alderwoman, Deb Hadcock.
I'm with Ron Wyffenbach. I think where we're trying to go is, does the applicant know of the emailed, has he had knowledge of the email? To be fair to him, he has no idea what we're talking about. So I think if we're going to continue this, we should be fair and bring forth to him all the information as well, so he can come up and defend himself. Because we're continuing this, I'm going to tell him straight up, we're continuing this because there was a letter sent to the city council, not at legal and finance, not before, then after the fact, about his character on, and his business practices. So bottom line is, he should be able to defend himself, and he should be able to see this, and I would hope that we could get that letter, so when this does come up for continuance, he can do his explanation, and we could be fair and just to him, and see what that is. Mr. Ashley, do you have a question about what I just said?
Mr. Ashley?
Yes, is there any way I could see the email now, from Bonnie?
I'm sure we can, we'll, we'll get that provided to you.
Tonight, or?
Yes.
And one more thing, I think if, if, if people plan on doing this to people, be straight up with them and call them. Because he had no idea, I had no idea until today at a gender view if there was any issues. And because of one email, we're continuing this, and this man has no idea what we're talking about. So I just, it says in my heart not to do this, because it's not right, over one email. But it also, I would like him to be able to defend himself and bring forward in case this makes the difference for this council also for not approving this license. So there's two kinds of things, and I would hope you would understand the continuance at this point, and we would be more fair and just to people that, at least the people that are thinking this is a big concern, to call the people that, that we have an email on him. Because I didn't know until this morning. So we need to start being a little bit diff, helpful to the citizens of Rapid City when we decide that we're going to shut something down for two weeks. Because I'm going to tell you, I've been on the other side of that dais, and it doesn't feel good having no idea why people, and what people are thinking about their business or their project. So I apologize, Mr. Ashley, I can't say more than that, they need to get you the email, but that's why you're getting continued today, sir.
Okay. They're going, the motion on the floor is to continue this item to the next council meeting. Let's go to Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing's been voted on yet, so we haven't made a decision to do a single thing. My question's for Mr. Ashley, if you would so oblige.
Go ahead, please.
First off, is there anything time-sensitive in your application for business that two weeks would cause trouble?
Mr. Ashley?
Not necessarily.
Thank you.
Thank you. Another question for you, Mr. Ashley, if I may. Have you conducted a business of this type before?
Mr. Ashley?
Selling hot dogs and flowers and stuff like that?
On the street, yes.
No, buy owned restaurants in the past... No, I've owned restaurants in the past.
Okay, so you understand safe-serve guidelines?
Yes, I own a hotel also.
Okay.
And my last Department of Health score has been in the range of 98 to 94.
Okay, thank you for that. I don't know what that means, but it sounds high. Thank you very much. I'd like to keep the floor and just gather my thoughts for a moment while the clock's ticking. There are many situations we're forced with at this dais that receive one complaint. And it's a rare occasion that we choose to continue that. In reading the email, it's all hearsay. I don't see one single statement in there that's been proved, or that research that I did showed any fact. Right now, I'm not in favor of continuing this. I think Mr. Ashley's done what he needs to do to have this license approved. But I will look forward to what my other colleagues have to say, and I yield the floor.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Dave Davis, who has not had the opportunity to speak yet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, will not be supporting continuing this for similar reasons to Alderman Costello. We're acting upon an email, a single email, with a series of accusations. But probably what threw me more than anything with the email was, although there was a name on the sender line, the individual sending it asked to remain anonymous. That doesn't carry a lot of weight for me. That pretty much threw it out the door right away. So as far as I was concerned, that email didn't exist. Because if you're not willing to come up and stand up and take a position, then the position doesn't exist from that.
I'd ask for approval. I didn't realize it was anonymous on top of it.
So that would be my direction, as I do not intend to support the substitute motion.
Next comment is from me. And I guess I would prefer that we continue this item. But if, you know, if we want to have a discussion tonight without having the city attorney give us information regarding our applicant here, then I guess we have it out tonight. And my question would be to our city attorney. Jason, have we had dealings with Mr. Ashley before?
Yes.
Have we had problems with Mr. Ashley?
Yes.
Have we had what I could consider health and safety issues with Mr. Ashley?
I believe that's fair, yes.
And that is one of the reasons why we were asked for a continuance, so we could get that information. If you want to go into more detail, I guess we can have our city attorney tell us what actions we had to take against Mr. Ashley. With that, further discussion. We'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I certainly don't think we should do backflips when we get, you know, one complaint about something. But issues were brought up that seemed there may have some validity to them, and that is why I felt it was in the public interest to continue. I'm not rejecting, I'm just saying, let's give us the time to look into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go on to Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Motion on the floor is to continue.
I'm almost getting speechless, because this fellow went through our process that we set up. It went to Legal and Finance. Nothing's been said. Nothing's been said to him that there's been problems here. If somebody's hiding something underneath the shell, let's get the shell and unfold it and show them. If there's a problem...I mean, if we have a...Mr. Mayor, I have to ask our city attorney a question.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Jason, do we have a process in place for approving licenses, vetting these people? I mean, typically, when a license process comes through, the police department vets it, the fire department vets it. Most of the city staff is aware of any issues that may resolve or may be in the substantial welfare of the safety, health, and morals of the community. We went through Legal and Finance, now we come here tonight, and evidently someone sends us an email, and that's a substantial matter for the public. Is there a process in place, Mr. Green, that goes through this and vets this up to this point?
Mr. Green?
There is a process, and I can't speak to what it is specifically, or who has input, or the level of vetting. I'd be happy to report on exactly what that is at the next Legal and Finance committee meeting, though.
Mr. Wyffenbach, you still have the floor.
I'm not sure how to explain my feelings on this, whether I like a person or don't like a person. We are policy and procedure makers. We've made a policy. At some point, you're either on board with the policy or you're not. And at some point, I don't work here full-time. I don't have any inklings of any run-ins with Mr. Ashley or anybody in the community, for that matter. Since I've been here three years, I don't think I've ever ran into this problem where we've gotten this far in a process, someone sends an email, and who's expecting to get some sort of a license, and then now we decide that we're going to continue it, when nobody up here knows why. So if we got a policy problem or a procedure problem, let's look and change that. But that shouldn't be held out to our citizens of our community or anybody looking for an application for something. If the shoe fits, wear it. I'm not sure where to go, except for the fact that I won't support a continuance. Thank you.
Thank you. There again, just a reminder for everyone, the motion on the floor is to continue. If we wanted to beat the merits of it, what we really need to do is defeat the motion on the floor. So if we could somewhat limit the discussion of whether or not it's appropriate to continue this, then we can take a vote, and then we can actually discuss the merits of whether or not to approve what's on the agenda in front of us. With that, let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
I guess my point is, there is a process in place. When we went to Legal and Finance, that's the bottom line for me. We went to Legal and Finance, never heard any of this information. That's where we get our information, to bring it to the council, so we have all the facts. Now we're coming back today on a council meeting, which, if we had it at Legal and Finance, this man would be prepared to defend himself, and he wouldn't have to continue. So we've vetted the process by not telling him any of the information. We did not give him full disclosure on what was coming up against him. And then we've got some information, or we have some information on him. I can tell you, it's about the process for me. Legal and Finance should have heard what this man had issues with and why we shouldn't have voted it in or out. It's not the time to bring it and continue it. I'm telling you right now, you're vetting the process, and it's disingenuous to the constituent. It is. Because if I'm fighting something, it should be at the Legal and Finance, the meeting where all this discussion is supposed to be made. So if we're continuing this, I'm not in favor, because we did not follow the process, and we're being disingenuous by not, again, telling him the facts and all the information in order for him to fight this case, and to bring it to a close with a simple yes or no, and we have all the information, and so did he.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderman Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to support the motion to continue this. I think you...we've already brought this up halfway, dropped it on you here. I think you deserve the right to be able to read the email, have a chance to answer that. I have some questions that I need to get answered, based on what the city attorney has said. Need to do a little research and see just exactly what your history is. Because if I have to vote tonight, yea or nay, on you getting licensed, and I got these questions in mind, I'm probably going to vote unfairly against you. But I want to find out, and I want you to have a chance to answer this, and I need to get some more information on your past business history and how it might affect citizens. So I will be supporting the motion to continue.
Okay. Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is to continue for two weeks, which is due a Tuesday night. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
Let's do a roll call, please.
No.
Hadcock.
No.
Costello.
No.
Quaker.
No.
Waugh.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Mason.
No.
Peterson.
No.
Wyffenbach.
Okay, motion fails on a six-to-four vote. We're back to the original motion. The original motion is for approval. Discussion on that motion. Any discussion? Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'd like to direct a question to Mr. Ashley.
Go ahead, please.
Let me first say that I am...sorry that these things happen, but we do have to consider the weight of the public safety. I would like to ask you if there's anything you would like to say at this time in response to the email that has been presented before you to defend yourself on the accusations.
Yes, I would. This person talks about an article in the Journal from 2009. I believe it was July 6 of 2010, last year. The head of the Department of Health for the state, Clark Hepner, said that I have gone above and beyond what is required from the state from my hotel. So I think that fact alone should show that I know what I'm doing. I mean, he made a point to say that in the article. I go above and beyond what is required from the state.
Okay. Mr. Mason, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess one of the things I would like to see is...I would like to see that...sorry while I gather my thoughts here. I guess the way I feel about this tonight is the fact that I realize that we do have to look out for the public safety. However, there is some responsibility with each person that chooses to patronize a business. I unfortunately have patronized a business that I did not take a liking to, and have subsequently not continued to patronize that business. And each one of these is an offense. I guess I would like to look at some other factors on how you can show that you have improved with the Department of Health. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question for Mr. Green.
Go ahead, please.
If a person holds a license in our town for whatever it is, a taxicab driver, if they're a food restaurant business, if there's complaints about that restaurant, is there a process that is handled to handle those complaints?
Mr. Green?
Generally, yes, there is.
So if this license is granted to Mr. Ashley, and he doesn't follow the rules, he knows the rules because he got the license, he went through the process, he did everything he was supposed to do, except for, I told him to wear a different jacket tonight. The fact of the matter is, he would have a process to go through if he violated the rules going forward. Mr. Mayor, that question would be...
Mr. Green?
Yes, there would be a process.
I mean, I think that, you know, being a businessperson myself, or conducting with several people, if I was held accountable for everything I did in the past, moving forward in either bringing up a business, or, you know, running a business and finding out later that I've broken some rules or broken some laws, incidentally, or in some cases, people on purpose, if there's a process in place that this fellow went through to get this license, he comes up here tonight unexpectedly, he finds out today that he has issues that are a reflection of his ability to get this license or not. We seem to have an issue with us and how we do business with policymaking in our community, if this is the case. So I think I can feel very comfortable that there's safeguards in place between the fire department, the police department, the health and safety, EPA. I mean, we could go on and on and on and down the list that this fellow will probably have to report to for a food license. I feel comfortable that they'll protect the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Jason, can you tell me the process in which to get a vending license downtown?
Jason?
And how many we have issued already?
I can describe it very generally. Marsha Elkins might be able to be more specific. Generally, there's an application process through Growth Management. I believe the Planning Commission reviews those.
City Finance Office.
City Finance, I'm sorry. And then they come to the council for final approval. I don't know how many of them have been issued, though. But Ms. Sumption or Ms. Elkins might be able to provide more detail than I can.
So in this process, it went through the Planning Commission? No. Marsha, if you could tell us the process, please.
Marsha, or Pauline?
There's two parts to the sidewalk vending license procedure. The first step, which you're at right now, is the actual license that is submitted to the finance office. I defer to Pauline on what happens to that. If a license is issued, then they can submit a permit application to Growth Management for a specific location. And so we're involved in it from a land use perspective only. And at that point in time, it goes to the Planning Commission for review of the location and compliance with the standards for the physical setup. But the licensing part is submitted to the finance office.
Deb?
So do I need to ask Pauline if...what is the license process, since that's the first step?
But a Pauline, our city finance officer.
And I will have to apologize upfront. This was an issue while I was on leave, and at that time, there was a lot of confusion as to what the actual procedure was. I know that we received the application. I would need to check our routing sheet to see where it goes from there. I know that once we do receive it, and all of the information is filled out, that is sent to the attorney's office for placement on the Legal and Finance agenda. But as far as any review, I am not sure at this time. I would have to look into that.
Okay, so basically, it goes to you guys, then the city attorney's office has it. It goes to Legal and Finance, which it passed through all those three so far, even Legal and Finance, and now it's at city council. And now we're finding out at city council we have some issues. I guess that's my bottom line. There should have been things brought up in that process beforehand, instead of at a city council meeting. In order to be fair and just, again, to the constituent or the business owner, you should, and to be fair to him, you should tell him before, so he can fight this all the way to city council. And when he gets here, hopefully, he's got all his ducks in a row, and he can prove everything that we need to shut down. So I'm in favor of giving his license, unless somebody can prove otherwise, that a vending license selling hot dogs and flowers is going to be a conflict for downtown.
Thank you. Let's go to Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. Mr. Ashley, I'm going to vote against this approval, because I wanted to be able to investigate the issues that were brought up in the email about your problems in the past that you've had. Because I believe some of those problems could potentially harm, be a hindrance to the health and welfare of our citizens. I would have preferred to have gotten the continuance, so I could, you know, check it all out, and so that I could support it. But tonight, I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions of the city attorney.
Go ahead, please.
You mentioned that you had some ongoing concerns from past history. Have any of those concerns or facts changed since Legal and Finance last Wednesday?
Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Why weren't those concerns brought to us at Legal and Finance last Wednesday?
Mr. Green?
Well, in all honesty, I can't say I wasn't at the meeting. I wish they had been brought at that time. But beyond that, I think I want to throw out there that I'm not entirely certain it's appropriate to consider character and fitness in the issuance of this type of permit. It may be. So that's why I would ask for a two-week continuance to evaluate that. But if you want me to go into some details about the concerns, I can do that right now.
No, I think we all understand where the concerns have been. I guess mine is more of a philosophical thing, and that's the reason that I was against the continuance tonight, because, and why I will be voting in favor of this. This was all brought about because of an anonymous email. And yet, the facts that we had that came through the system, had that email not arrived this morning, probably would have gone through without all of this last 20-minute discussion. That concerns me. If this was a year ago, when Caterpillar was coming to town and saying, hey, we're going to bring 200 jobs, and we're all excited, and everybody is moving forward, and we'd gotten an anonymous email that said, hey, they may not do everything according to the way we like it, would we be in the same place tonight? I don't think so. And that's very concerning to me, that we are treating different businesses differently on the same type of a situation. So had this come through Legal and Finance, and those concerns had been brought to my attention, I would have no problem continuing. I would have no problem voting against if, in fact, that's a legal way to stop the thing. As it is, I will be voting in favor of Mr. Ashley getting his license, and I would be very, very adamant to look you right in the eye, John, and tell you that if... very, very adamant to look you right in the eye, John, and tell you that if you aren't running a clean show and there is a health issue, I could expect that you would have all of the legal ramifications to have that license pulled from you, because that's the way I would expect the law to work. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. John, my apologies. At this point, it's really questions to you and not so much statements, but we'll go to Jordan Mason, see if he has a question for you. If not, Mr. Mason, you do have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. In hearing this, I just wanted to state my position on this. I, for one, do not believe in taking one's past and using it against them repeatedly, just like in other forms of bodies that have to use discretion. We cannot be unreasonable or capricious or even arbitrary in how we apply that. And I personally think, I would reiterate the points of Alderman Davis, that I will be supporting giving you a license, because as of today, I have not seen anything brought forward to say that this proposal has already somehow subsequently violated any ordinance. So I think it is important to keep in mind that we are talking about something today and not yesterday. And today, Mr. Ashley, you stand before us with the proposal, and I'm assuming with a past that hopefully you have learned from, and you will not make the same mistakes tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that I'll probably get gavelled for this, but I gotta say, watching Mr. Ashley sit up here and get beat up over him trying to get a license when he went through the process is something that our council needs to consider, that this guy doesn't have the ability to speak his mind unless I ask him a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is for approval. We're on item number, what are we, item number 28? Thank you. Item number 28, which is to approve the application of a sidewalk vending license for, from John Ashley. Further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll find out here in a few minutes how this vote goes, but I would ask all the council members that if we approve Mr. Ashley's license, that you don't drop it there and you ask the city attorney to get you the information with the dealings we've had with Mr. Ashley in the past. I would hope that she would do that, but I'm certainly not gonna support approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you. I think it's important to say something here, and that is that this item was on the consent calendar. And the city attorney, who is supposed to represent the council and the community and the mayor, in my humble opinion and obligation, bring forward concerns if there were concerns to be brought forward. Not wait until we get to a council meeting and have an item pulled off consent, and then put this gentleman through this proceeding and not give him a chance to respond. So if we're going to vote to continue this man's license tonight for a hot dog stand, we need to allow him the opportunity to fully state his case and to respond to the concerns that are being thrown out. He has not had an adequate opportunity to respond. I'm assuming that the engineer that he has with him tonight is being paid to sit in the audience. So if we continue this, unless Mr. Albertson's doing this out of the goodness of his heart, I'm assuming that if we continue this, there's more cost to Mr. Ashley for this, I think we need to be fair and judicious in this process. And so if we're going to deny this man's license tonight, if this motion fails, and there's an opportunity to continue it again or to deny it, then we need to give him a full opportunity to comment, because he didn't comment in the beginning, because he didn't know that this was going to get pulled off. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a clarification on that. I did not ask for this item to be pulled off of the consent calendar, and Alderman asked me some questions about the email. I provided that information. I recognize that this information was not provided in advance. And as this discussion has gone on, I've had the opportunity to review the ordinance on the vendor license, and I don't find anything in that ordinance that pertains to character and fitness. As a result of that, I recommend that you approve the license tonight.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Let's take a quick roll call, please.
Hadcock. Kroger. Costello.
Aye.
Quaker. Wa. Brown. Mason. Peterson. Wyffenbach. Davis. Motion carries.
Motion passes on a seven to three vote. Thank you, everyone, for that discussion. That does take us to item number 31. Alderwoman Hadcock, if you would, please. Item 31. If you just make a motion to table, then or table two is to acknowledge.
Number 31 is to acknowledge report on status of development agreement with St. Joe LLC Development, and I move to table.
We have a motion and second to table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 40, please. Deb, if you would read that in.
Thank you. Number 40 is acknowledge local board of equalization schedule and sign-up sheet, and I acknowledge the report.
We have a motion and a second to acknowledge. Pauline, you gonna pass it down the dais?
I am going to pass it down the dais. If you'll see, I shortened the list. For the first three days of the week, we're gonna try and get it done towards the beginning of the week, depending on how many applicants we have to come before you instate your case. So please sign up as much as you can. I realize that some people are going to be out of town. I've made some notes on those that I know. If I don't have that information, please write that at the bottom. But I do hope that you guys can fill this sheet. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge.
Two questions. One is, do we know the status of the state law change to allow more, to allow more school board members other than just one? Is that?
Yes, I can give you your report. Actually, on Tuesday of last week, it was in front of the local government committee on the senate side, Von Taylor, let's see, Senator Krebs presented it, Von Taylor, a number of us were actually in peer for the municipal league testified, and it did pass out of committee on a seven to zero vote to approve. And basically, what the language was, it would reduce the number of city council members from the current status of six down to two, and it would increase the number of school board members from one up into three, and then the school board would also be responsible for actually running the meetings. It was scheduled for a house, let's see, for, I'm sorry, for a senate floor vote today. It did get deferred with the balance of the agenda. They didn't make it all the way through. I expect it to be on the floor of the senate tomorrow, then it's off to the house side.
It would be a five-member committee if that passes from a seven.
Actually, what it says, Alderman Quaker, is it says you will have three school board members and then two members from any municipality within the district. In other words, in our case, we may have, depending on the actual appeal that's in front of it, you may have other members. But my understanding is they're looking to amend it so it would reflect that only, the council members would only vote for those folks that actually lived within the corporate limits of the municipality that they represent.
So it would go from a seven to a five-member board.
It would actually go, it could actually go to bigger than that, depending on how many municipalities are in there, but in essence, yes, we would be responsible for two members.
And then the other comment that I would have is, in past years, Pauline, we've had evening hearings, which is easier for those that are making appeals, and also easier for some members of the school board and council to attend. Is there any reason this year why there are no evening hearings scheduled at all?
Pauline.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We actually called the equalization office and said, they said that they were not going to schedule any evening meetings. So that's why there's no evenings on the sheet.
Okay. So I just hope that no stones are cast at council members for not being able to sign up for a whole bunch of meetings if there's no evening hearings, so.
I don't cast stones. I just hope you show up so we have a quorum so we can hold the meeting, so.
Further discussion? Motion on the floor is to acknowledge. Go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I don't know about other council members, but I've had many people come in to the beauty shop, of course, men and women, that said, you guys approved my stuff, my lowering of my property taxes, and then I have to go through another board, and they approve none of our property taxes. They don't even hear, basically, and I'm not trying to beat up the county at all, I'm just saying, I haven't figured out this process and how it's working for people, because a lot of times, it's overturned. So I just want to give a heads up that we are there to listen and we're trying to help, but bottom line is, we don't have the final say. And a lot of people are not understanding that, because they think they've got a way through once we've decided that. So just know that that's the way the process is. They can overturn anything that we say, so.
Thank you.
Heads up.
Motion on the floor is to acknowledge item number 40. Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't mind being on that equalization board, and I think when, each time that people come up, they're told, they're instructed that we are not the final opinion, that the county is the final opinion. And so I just want to let everybody know that, and, you know, sometimes we make decisions for the county that they can't control either. So maybe it's an opportunity for them to get their tax money back. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That does take us to the end of the consent calendar. We're on to the continued consent calendar. These are items number 55 through 60 inclusive. I have no speaker requests on any of those items. Let's see, is there anyone from the committee or from staff who needs to have any of these items removed? You're good, Marsha? How about from the city council, 55 through 60? If not, chair, look for a motion to approve items 55 through 60 inclusive per the recommendations on the printed agenda. We have a motion and second to discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Takes us to the end of the continued consent items. We're on to the non-consent items, items 61 through 72 inclusive. Chair, look for a motion to open the public comment period, items 61 through 72 inclusive. We have a motion and second to discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I have no speaker request forms on items 61 through 72. Anyone in the audience wish to speak to any of these items, 61 through 72? Not? Chair, look for a motion. Close the public comment period. We have a motion and second to discussion on the motion. Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Onto ordinances, item number 61. Ms. Hadcock, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Hanks. Okay, 61 is second reading of ordinance number 5612, repealing chapter 15.48 of the Rapid City Municipal Code relating to mobile homes and mobile home parks and adopting a new revised chapter 15.48 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. And I move approval with revised version identified as 12611.
Do we have a second, please?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the revised versions, which is identified as 126-11. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to offer a motion to continue this item for 60 days and set up a follow-up open house. The last open house was held on July 13, I can see.
Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to actually ask some questions about this ordinance, and specifically with 15.4808 on the clearances, and I would like to direct my question to, hopefully, Mr. Broderick or someone from the fire department, if they would be willing to answer those questions.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and state your question, please?
In dealing with Part A, specifically on the side clearance for any manufactured home, there is an exception where it can be reduced to 10 feet if both structures meet the NFPA standards for fire sprinkler protection. I'm assuming this is the 13D home sprinkler system. Is that correct?
Tim, hang on a second here. Could you please identify yourself for the record?
Yes, Tim Billings with the Rapid City Fire Department, Assistant Chief from the Prevention Division.
Okay, now go ahead and answer the question.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mason, that would be the NFPA 13D, the one in two-family dwelling code for fire sprinklers.
Thank you, Mr. Billings. And out of curiosity, is this required for any other homes, stick-built homes of the like?
Mr. Billings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Right now, it's not specifically required. It's used as a tool in areas where we have inadequate water flow, setback issues, access issues, and the like.
So it's suggested but not required at this time for any other homes?
That's correct. There's actually a state law in place right now that prohibits us from adopting ordinances that require it in those other instances that I previously mentioned, other than using it as a tool to help continue growth and development, so.
I'm sorry, can you state that again? There's a law that prohibits?
Mr. Billings?
Thank you. Yes, currently, there's a law that was passed last year that prohibits municipalities and from adopting an ordinance that would require the residential fire sprinkler to be provided in one- and two-family dwellings. And there's a couple more caveats to that as well. But in this particular case, it's utilized as a tool in an effort to reduce separation distances and/or offset other code issues, so it is acceptable.
Thank you, Mr. Billings. I would also like to ask a question of Ms. Elkins from our Growth Management Department. After looking at some of the other ordinances and dealing with MDR and LDR zoning, I'm noticing that the side clearance seems a little bit different. Is this normal to have a 20-foot side clearance from other stick-built homes?
Marsha?
For a stick-built home, there would be an eight-foot side yard or a total of 16 feet between structures for a one-story building. For a two-story building, it would be 12 feet or 24, potentially, is the total distance between the two. However, there is a little bit difference in the construction standards and type of materials that are used in those two different types of construction.
Ms. Elkins, I would like to ask one more question of you. Is there a reason why we're asking for more than 12 or 16 feet of other structures that are similar for housing in this instance? Because it seems that it's 20 feet. Is there a reason why we're asking for the extra side clearance?
Marsha?
I think the fire department staff could probably best answer that. That was a concern of theirs.
Tim, do you want to get, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. When we were going through the development of these rules and the reorganization of them, we started looking at the distances. And the reason for the 20 feet between the structures is to address dealing with sheds, to address the construction types of the mobile homes themselves or manufactured housing, which is oftentimes in a little bit lesser standard than a conventional home. They operate under different rules. Doesn't mean it's a lesser-built home, it's just simply a different construction standards. Also, most of these homes are not set on a fixed foundation, where it's a non-combustible foundation. Most of them have a limited combustible or non-combustible sheathing that's not specifically fixed to the ground, so to speak. So the extra distance, actually under fire conditions, allows us the opportunity for added time for people to escape, added time for us to respond, and it minimizes the effect of fire from one home to the adjacent structure itself.
Thank you. Mr. Mason, you still have the floor.
Thank you, and I will be very brief here. I do appreciate the work on this ordinance. However, as I've said from the beginning, I'm looking for an equitable standard, and unfortunately, tonight, it, I do not see an equitable standard being applied to all houses across the board here. And especially, I do understand what you're saying, but looking at our ordinances in 17.38040 and dealing with other similar structures, I do not see this as an equitable ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I probably should have prefaced my comments before offering the motion earlier, but since we're not able to offer comments and then make a motion, but the reality is, is that this ordinance has gone through eight revisions, and the open house for the public was held on July 13. And at least, that's what I see here. And so has there been, other than these meetings here, has there been, has there been an additional open house?
Let's go to Marsha Elkins.
I can't remember if it's four or five additional open houses that we've had. The most recent, I looked on my calendar, was January 3, 2011, and there's been a few revisions and changes as a result of conversations that started at that meeting. that meeting. But there have been multiple open houses on this issue. We've become good friends, and I see a few other folks in the audience that may want to comment.
And the...
Go ahead, yes.
And I guess if you click on the link in the agenda, it doesn't, it doesn't say that. It refers to the one open house. And then one of the, one of the links was actually, I think, the link for the January three meeting. That link is actually a, a dead link. So anyway, I, I think it's, it seems to me somewhat difficult for, for both the public and perhaps the council to kind of track this from, from beginning to end. And I, there have been a number of concerns raised regarding this ordinance. And I, I just, I, I wanted to just make sure that, that if we had a, you know, that the same people that were invited to the very first open house would be invited to, invited to another one so that this, so that this doesn't have to go through more revisions after it's been passed. If it's gone through this many revisions up to this point, there may be more work that needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some other questions for Assistant Chief Billings, if I may.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Tim, you had mentioned that at the open house that we had downstairs last month, that, one of the many that Marcia mentioned that we've all attended. One of the reasons that, that we were speaking about the, the sprinkler as being an option to allow the, the proximity of these homes a little closer is simply because of the density of the inhabitants, correct?
That's correct.
Similar to what it might be in an apartment house in difference to single-family dwellings?
Is that correct, Tim?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. And we have similar ordinance for multi-family apartment units in place today. Is that also correct?
Tim?
Yes, sir, that'd be correct.
Okay, so the, the question about equity that was raised, as I understand this ordinance, the folks that, that were talking about rent a piece of property, much like someone rents an apartment house, rents that unit in an apartment house. So there is equity in a like type of, of, I'm making a statement, I'm not asking for you to weigh in on this, Tim. It looks to me as though there is equity between the, the two types of, of, of units in, in that sense. What we're really after, though, is we want to make sure that we have a safe living environment. And it, it, it looks as though what you've, what you've brought forward is an opportunity for people to actually bring their homes closer together if, in fact, they give you the opportunity to get there and defend them in the case of a fire. Am I correct?
That is very correct, yes.
With, with that being said, that it looks like we're trying to protect the public and people's rights have been, their property rights have been protected, and we're dealing with people equitably, I will support it. Thank you.
Here, let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
I appreciate all the work that has been done on the mobile home ordinance. I honestly could say that because of a variance on one of the mobile home parks that this came about, I worked very hard for many months to make sure, even followed through with the variance board with this mobile home park over on East St. Pat. And that's where we figured out that our mobile home standards weren't working. That's where it all began. So I know it was put in the paper that it taking people's rights or something like that, but that's not what this was about. It was about protecting people's rights. And because of that mobile home, there was a before nineteen sixty-eight, there was a after nineteen sixty-eight. The fire department couldn't figure it out on most of those because they were trying to figure out what's ruled to, to work with. The growth management, the inspectors, there were just so many issues in there that needed to be addressed. These guys have went through it, and they went through many meetings, and this started a long time ago. This wasn't something that just came about. And we're having a couple of public meetings, and we're pushing this through, and we're taking the rights of the people. That's not what this is about. One of the people that had complained never went to one of those meetings. He also wrote a letter in the newspaper. Told him to call me, told him to do what he needs to do. Same with Alderman, on this, I totally understand what you're talking about, Jordan, but there can be amendments. If there's enough people coming in, that amendment that you're talking about, or that change that needs to be taken, it can be taken care of. You can pass this. And what I tell people is go out to the mobile homes or see in six months or a year, however you'd like to do it, go back and ask, because that will prove if you're, if they're right or if they're wrong. And I've been on this council, what, five years or so? And I've learned that's how I change the stipulations or amendments or ordinances because they aren't working. Or you just have enough people come up and say, this isn't working for us. These guys have worked hard on this. They have taken many public input. We have continued this, continued this. Marcia, many times, has taken and concerned the people in the audience or people coming up, the fire department, council members' concerns. They have worked very, very hard. And I appreciate their work. I never said it was perfect. I never said every one of these rules are going to work for the mobile homes. I'm saying, if they don't work, council members will know about it, the fire department will know, and growth management will know. There will be enough people, take my word for it, coming up. If it doesn't work, I'll be the first one up here as well to change some of those amendments. So I totally understand where, where people are coming from. And I do care what the public thinks. And this is why this is, this change has came about. It wasn't Deb Hadcock, it was a team of people and a team of people on East St. Pat that made this difference. So I appreciate the mobile home people that started this and asked me to see if we could do some changes. And that's what we've done with the staff's help and many of the constituents in Rapid City. So we appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Let's go to Marcia Elkins, Growth Management Director. As before, let's go to Alderman Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. Could I ask Marcia a question?
Sure.
Hi, Marcia. This end clearance, is that between the manufactured homes? Is that like, like someone equivalent to like a side, a front yard and a backyard? Is the end clearance? And how is that compared to a regular home?
Marcia?
Actually, it's a little bit different because, remember, these are all on one property. This would be in a mobile home park where the end to end. A requirement in a stick-built subdivision on individual lots would be twenty-five feet on each lot. So there'd be a minimum of fifty between the two.
Okay, so in a stick-built home, you'd have to have fifty feet?
Correct. Both of the structures were complying.
And on the manufactured home, you only have to have ten feet?
I believe that's what we ended up...
Is that...
That's correct. That's correct.
So, okay. Is that twenty feet total or ten feet total between end to end?
That'd be ten feet total.
Okay.
And I can explain a little bit why there's a difference between the end and the side, if I may.
Bonnie, go ahead, Tim.
Thank you. The, the basic difference between the side and the end is sheer size of the exposure itself from one to the other. There's, there's, most often, we don't have sheds and the like between the end, end components of those, of those manufactured homes. And the physical size is much less. So from a fire standpoint, we don't have that, that same inherent risk as we do for the long length of the trailers itself, or the manufactured homes. They're no longer referred to as trailers or manufactured homes.
Thank you.
I, again, would like to thank you for all your work that Marcia and everyone has done for this. And these are, these areas are different. Some spaces are maybe larger, others spaces are smaller. But I think that when you're looking at multi-families, multiple families living in close proximity with each other, that we really need to err on the side of safety. There's elderly people and children that might be left alone. So we do need as much fire safety in those areas as possible. So I will be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a couple of brief and quick comments regarding some of the other comments that have been made about multiple families. I just wanted to point out that under our state law, the definition of single-family dwelling includes a manufactured home under South Dakota Codeified Law ten Tac forty-five. And that's repeated throughout. I do understand the comparison of an apartment complex, and I can maybe understand that analogy. But frankly, as far as our law is constructed, that comparison is not applicable, in my opinion. I, I would just like to point out that many of these mobile homes, these are people's homes. And I am very tenuous about changing or stipulating any sort of requirements on somebody's home and their property. What disturbs me about this and why I am constantly been researching this throughout this entire process is because many of these people throughout these past couple of years, these have been pretty hard times. And trying to make any modification to where you would have to reduce this within ten feet and pay, I think it's about a buck a square foot, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere right around there, sometimes less, for these homes, may be a costly addition on top of trying to make improvements to your house if you can't afford them. So overall, I just, I want to restate that due to the idea that the side clearances are different, there's extra requirements that are not required of other homeowners in this area, and the fact that the South Dakota Codeified Law defines this along with every other home in the area as a single-family dwelling, I do not see this as a, a standard. I, I feel like we are trying to make these homeowners meet a higher standard than everyone else in our community. And that is why we'll be voting against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, excuse me, let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate all the, all the input that the council's given. And I appreciate the hard work that Mr. Krab has done and the rest of the, of the fire department, any of the aldermen that have attended all these meetings, these lengthy meetings, and narrowing this down. But I have a couple of questions because there's, I have a little bit of a concern here in, in reference to how we circumvent, I mean, we, we're chartered under an aldermatic form of government, which is, which basically abides by the state laws. But we've, we figure out ways to circumvent them to fit our needs. And one of the questions I have is based upon the fact that Mr. Billings had mentioned that the state law, they passed a law, they went on their way to pass a law to keep us from requiring sprinkler systems on one and two-family homes. But yet, we found a way to, to force people if they want to have a shed, or whatever case it may be, that would fit into their yard, to require them to have the sprinkler system. And, I mean, we can call it whatever we want. We can call it because we're, you know, we're looking at opportunity or whatever we, we talked about. So my question is to Mr. Billings, is what is the spirit of this law? What is the state, why did the state pass this law? And now we're, we're trying to find a way to basically kind of circumvent it or whatever. I mean, there's something that I'm missing.
Mr. Billings?
Thank you. The basis of the law is, is pretty, pretty deep, and it's difficult to get into that component of it. So the, the, in my opinion, the, the basis of the law was, was based upon misinformation and the application of the International Residential Code and Fire Code and Building Codes as it refers to residential fire sprinkler protection. It was a bit of an item that appeared to scare people, felt it was cost prohibitive, and there's just a lot of misinformation that was brought out towards that. As it relates to this, all this is, is we're not requiring anybody to fire sprinkler protect their, their manufactured home. All it is, is a tool to allow some higher densities, to allow potentially some two-story manufactured homes in fairly close proximity, which is actually a tighter proximity than we would see in a typical neighborhood. Mr. Akers and Mrs. Akers over here, we're looking at redevelopment of some areas in the city of manufactured home parks that we're looking for ways to make that work, to make these older parks, to be able to rejuvenate these older parks, to be able to bring in newer homes, newer style homes. And it was another tool in the toolbox, is all, that would allow that those, those older lots and the older parks to work with the newer style homes that, that are being developed, that Mr. Akers is developing. So, so the residential fire sprinkler protection is simply another component or tool in the toolbox to allow that to occur, to allow some really good things to, to occur within the city on this redevelopment and, and provide that additional public safety that, that we, we definitely are here to do.
Thank you, Mr. Billings. I appreciate that explanation.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
I have a question for whoever can answer, whether it be Mr. Billings or Marcia or...
Okay.
What is the current code for the spaces between the sides of two, two mobile homes?
Mr. Billings?
Oh, thank you. I believe, and you might have to correct me if I'm wrong, fifteen feet, I believe, is where we're currently at. Rich Broderick, my, my partner here identifies fifteen feet.
Then, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I have another question. And it says manufactured homes. There's, there's, there's homes that are built to HUD code that are manufactured, or UBC, I'm sorry, that are manufactured homes.
The manufactured, manufactured homes, there's a couple of different codes that can be constructed, or could be constructed under International Building Code or International Residential Code, actually. But the, the typical manufactured home are, are built to HUD standards, which are, are a different standard than the International Residential Code would have.
But understand that, Mr. Mayor, that this could be interpreted, maybe not by this council, but a future council, as a modular home that typically can go up in a neighborhood with stick homes. It's a manufactured home. I mean, I'm not sure if we clarified that somewhere in this, this ordinance. I just noticed that tonight.
And Marcia, I think you can give us that definition. Really, what it comes down to is a modular home, if it's built to FEMA standards and put on a permanent foundation, it is classified as the same as a stick-built. Marcia, did I get that close?
Close. Fifteen forty-eight oh one oh of this draft ordinance defines manufactured home as anything that's built to the HUD standards. If it's built to the International Residential Code...
Okay.
Then it is a modular unit and can be put on any other lot when it's put on a full foundation, just like a stick-built home. Panelized construction, same way.
Thank you. So that's, the terms are laid, laid out in there. Thank you very much. The other question I had is, is it, does this make this impossible for someone to put a shed in their yard? I mean, because it's typically not, we're not looking at setbacks for, we're, we're saying if you have a shed, it can't be within the same distance of, of your neighbor's...
Tim?
Thank you. No, actually, actually, what this, this provision does allow for sheds to be placed between those trailers. In fact, that, between the modular home, manufactured homes, I'm still stuck in the old days with the old, old terminology. But, but that added width actually does allow us to allow those, those sheds. That was part of the concern that was brought forward to us through some of the public hearings. In addition, it also allows us to work with those, with the additions to the homes themselves or the other modifications for covered porches.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify, it allows us to beat the clock.
Go ahead and ask.
The five thousand dollar clock killed me today.
Yeah. Real quick, ask your question.
I just wanted to know if, when I talk about a shed, I'm talking about in a closed shed with the door.
Okay, very good.
Yes, that'd be correct. That'd be, that is approved.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
There's some, I, I know the Akers are in the audience tonight, and they have stick-built, they own a lot of Star Village, which I've been working with and, and doing some stuff up there. They have the stick-built, they have man, they're wanting to do manufactured. They cleaned up old mobile homes, put new mobile homes in there. I just wanted to ask them on this mobile home ordinance, was there an issue with the setback? Did it seem unfair? Did it seem like it was being unfair to the stick-built compared to the mobile home or the manufactured? Did you feel like this mobile home was, or this ordinance was singling out the mobile home people and making it different, different or difficult by chance? If maybe one of you two would like to maybe comment on this mobile home ordinance?
And Bob, if you'd like to comment, it's certainly at your discretion, but I'd ask you to come up to the microphones if you'd like to. Did you like, would you like to respond? There again, Mr. Akers, I would please ask that you identify yourself for the record and then, and if you could respond to Alderman Hadcock's question.
I'm not too good about talking, but my name is Bob Akers. And the reason why we changed this around is because we could not bring in these mobile homes by, it costs so much money to bring them in. So we decided we'd make them ourselves and save it down where we could rent them out to the people at the right price. And by, by redoing this, we want to put all new sewer and everything, bring them up to date, and be able to put these people in at a cheaper price. And we just couldn't bring in new trailers. And when they got in here, they're, most of them are tore up. So we decided to build them ourselves and fill their factory where we can build them cheap enough that we can take care of the people.
So, Mr. Aker, by chance, do you feel like the setbacks that they have put for manufactured or the other mobile homes, do you think that was unfair and was different than what the stick-built was done by state law? Or my bottom line is, do you feel like these setbacks are in all inhibiting you to run a good mobile home park or to add or continuing doing business as a mobile home park?
Mr. Akers?
Well, if you don't have this setback on them, we can, we can build them to the size to meet that by going two stories. And we need that setback to be able to, be able to do it.
So you can do it with the setbacks that they have set forth with this mobile home ordinance?
Yes.
And it would not inhibit you from doing anything that you would have done before?
I don't quite understand you.
Mr. Akers, I think what Alderman Hadcock is leading up to is, do you agree with the, with the proposal that's in front of the council tonight?
Yes.
Have you had a chance?
And I appreciate that. I guess why I'm asking that, sir, was there was many mobile home parks that we have dealt, dealt with... with, not just yours, and I didn't hear anybody say those side setbacks and what the fire department said, what Marcia Elkins, what the group said, the bottom line was, nobody complained. There was maybe one complaint, but like we said, we don't base it on one complaint. We base it on people that do this business, and we listen to all the constituents, we're not saying that. But the bottom line is, is it inhibiting anybody from doing business as a mobile home or a mobile home park by creating this new ordinance? We created this for that simple reason, so people could bring modulators, could update and make things for their mobile home, whether you're a single mobile home or a mobile home park, and I appreciate it, again, all the work on this. What I'm trying to, to make this point is, is that it is working. They are saying it's going to work, and they're the ones that do the business. And if it comes back, and he comes back and says, this setback isn't working, we need to change this, it will be changed, I'm pretty sure. So there's many mobile home park owners that would change that, and I'm sure that the single-family or single, whatever, mobile home people that just own one lot would be in favor if it was such a bad amendment, they'd come up as well. So I haven't heard that. I've asked Marcia, I've asked the fire department, I asked mobile home people, I did my homework on it, and I'm just saying, if that was a big issue, you would see that on your dais by looking at all the emails. So I agree, the questions need to be answered, this is the second reading, but I'm telling you, their solution, and they've done their work. So I appreciate you, sir, coming up. I just wanted to make sure it was working up there, and hopefully I can help you get some more stuff done for Star Village. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, further discussion, I'm going to go to Marcia Elkins.
Two quick comments. One, sheds and playhouses are allowed, they're allowed to be right up against the mobile home unit that it's located on that same lot. It has to be five foot away from a shed or that's on the next mobile home lot. So that provision's been addressed, and again, a concern that was expressed. The second thing is a comment I made to the committee, and I just want to share with the full council, there will be some things in here that don't work. We've done a complete overhaul of this, we've tried to work through the issues, we've done our best for you, but I suspect that there will be some other things, and expect to see us come back to say, this is working, this is not, we missed this, this definition didn't work. So I will caution you, you'll see us again on this, but we, again, want to see these improvements so we can move forward.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important to recognize, and I mentioned it earlier, but I think it's important to emphasize that this has gone through more than eight revisions. I realize that a tremendous amount of work has been put into this. It is very difficult, I think, for a member of the public to track what has changed from last July until now. It looks like more than one open house was held, however, the link on tonight's agenda doesn't indicate that there were other open houses. It, at least, one of the other links isn't working, and there isn't a comparison document that identifies what has changed throughout the process. So I, that's my concern, these are, these are big, these are big changes, yet no one is quite sure exactly what's, what's changed. And yes, it is our responsibility to, to do the homework, and, and yes, that is important. When you go through all of these eight ordinances, it's hard to track what's changed and what hasn't. So I think that that was the, that was the concern that I had earlier, and that was the reason why I thought it was important to, to have that last open house and summarize those comments, and if there's been other open houses, then those comments should have been summarized and linked. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval, seeing no further lights. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's take a roll call, please.
Kroger.
Aye.
Costello.
Aye.
Quaker.
Wa.
Brown.
Mason.
Peterson.
Wyffenbach.
Davis.
Hadcock.
Motion carries.
Motion passes eight to two. Alderman, Alderwoman Hadcock, could you please read item number sixty-two, please?
Approved, just kidding. Second reading is ordinance number fifty-six thirteen, repealing section seventeen point five zero point one one zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code relating to supplementary regulations applicable to mobile home parks and adopting a new revised section seventeen point five zero point one one zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, approved as revised version identified as eleven twelve ten. Move or.
We have a motion and second for approval, discussion on that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item sixty-four, please.
First reading of ordinance number fifty-seven ten, an ordinance to allow the use of teleconference meetings in special circumstance by adding section two point zero eight point zero two five to the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move to continue till February twenty-second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to continue this to February twenty-second. Any discussion on the continuation motion? And we're going to start holding very close, the discussion tonight will, from this point on, will only be for the continuation motion. We're, we've killed about two hours here, so that, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you.
Oh, can you, your mic, please?
You know, the comments we made, we've killed two hours, and we're doing the work of the people. So I guess in, in speaking to, directly to the motion on the floor, I think that we need to clearly define what teleconference means. I remember, and I'm speaking to the motion when I say that.
The motion, Sam Bush, Sam, Sam, the motion on the floor is a continuation motion. You will certainly be honored or respected, but if you could just somehow phrase it in, in a form of why you think it should be continued, not getting into the substance of the motion.
As part of the continuation, it's important to define the definition of teleconference. I remember a number of years ago, seeing a telephone held up to a microphone so that a council member could partake of a meeting. We just need to define what teleconference means. That is to the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to continue to the February twenty-second meeting, discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
In this case, teleconferencing would be using phone, in this case. This was brought up, and we're continuing this because me and Jason need to work together a little bit more on what we want to do and define it by, and we will bring that back to you, Mr. Quaker, and define that a little better for you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Let's go to Jordan Mason. Motion on the floor is continuation, and go ahead, Mr. Mason.
Just a quick comment, I will obviously be supporting the continuance, and I just want to thank Alderwoman Hadcock with pushing this forward and working on it really hard on this particular effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I'm going to just take one real quick point here, and that is the fact that I've given everybody quite a bit of latitude as far as the motions about on the floor. I guess I would respectfully disagree with Alderman Quaker a little bit here in the fact that one of the things that we need to do for the benefit of the public and also those in the audience here is to make sure that we follow our own rules. So quite honestly, if it's anyone's fault, it's mine because I gave more liberty than I probably should have up until this point, and from this point on, and in future meetings, we will hold very strictly to the motions that are on the floor. With that, item number sixty-five.
Sixty-five, thank you, Mayor. First reading ordinance number fifty-seven eleven, an ordinance to amend prohibited acts at the Rapid City Library by amending section, I wrote all over my paper, nine point zero four zero three zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval, first reading of ordinance number fifty-seven eleven. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number sixty-six, please.
Sixty-six is a request by Dream Design International for a preliminary plat located at two-three-two-nine-nine South Airport Road. Approved with stipulations.
Sir.
We have a motion and a second for approval, stipulations, discussion on that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number sixty-seven, please.
Sixty-seven is a request by Spurlet Consulting Incorporated for LICH Enterprise for a preliminary plat located at the northeast corner of the intersection of South Dakota State Highway forty-four and Covington Street, and I approve with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval of item number sixty-seven, which is a preliminary plat, and has for approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number sixty-seven, please.
Sixty-seven is a request by Spurlet Consulting Incorporated for LICH Enterprise for a preliminary plat located at the northeast corner of the intersection of South Dakota State Highway forty-four and Covington Street, and I approve with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval of item number sixty-seven, which is a preliminary plat, and has for approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Onto the bids, Pauline, sixty-eight and sixty-nine.
The first one, number sixty-eight, is for automated containers for solid waste division. They did go out for bids for thirty-five gallon containers, sixty-five gallon containers, and ninety-five gallon containers. The recommendation is to award the bid for the thirty-five gallon containers to sanitation products for forty thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars. As you can see, that is actually the highest bid that we received, but it is the only bidder that met specifications. The sixty-five gallon container recommendation is to award that to Auto Environmental Systems in the amount of twenty-four thousand nine sixty-six forty-eight, and then the ninety-five gallon containers also to Auto Environmental Systems for eighteen thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty cents.
Okay, do we have a motion, please? Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval, and I'm going to read through this real quick. Thirty-five gallon containers to sanitation products for a unit price of forty dollars and fifty cents, or grand total of forty thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars on the sixty-five gallon containers that would go to Northern Truck Equipment?
No, in Auto Environmental Systems.
Oh, I'm sorry, Auto Environment, I'm looking, yours is a little bit different than my, Pauline, my apologies. For a unit price of forty-two forty-six, or a grand total of twenty-four thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars and forty-eight cents, and the ninety-five gallon containers would also go to Auto Environmental Systems for a unit price of forty-eight eighty-five for a grand total of eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty cents.
Correct.
Okay, everyone clear on the motion? Please don't make me restate it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The next item that went out for bid was the Meadowbrook Golf Course Maintenance Building Project. This was also opened on February first, two thousand and eleven. We received four bids on this project. The recommendation is to award the base bid plus alternates one and four in the total amount of six hundred and ninety-five thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars to First Dakota Enterprises, Inc.
Move or.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to award the bid to First Dakota Enterprises, the base bid, alternates one and alternates four for a grand total of six hundred and ninety-five thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Robert Ellis, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out, alternate two and three seemed a little bit high for our low bidder, compared to the other prices, and for some reason, it's much higher. What we'd like to do is not award those tonight, but probably this would result in a change order later on if we can negotiate a better price for that. So I just wanted to kind of give fair warning right now that we would probably like to change order those in if we can negotiate a better price.
Yep, very good. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate that. Mr. Ellis, Mr. Mayor, my question would be for Robert Ellis.
Kate, go ahead, please.
Robert, is this, I haven't seen First Dakota Enterprises on any of our bids before, so I'm.
Mr. Ellis?
The little I know about them, they're from Fort Pierce, so they are a South Dakota contractor, they are outside the Black Hills, and all I know is what I've Googled.
Okay, well, sometimes I make the assumptions that we vet these people, so I don't know if that's been done, Mr. Mayor, or.
Typically, what happens, we have a new contract, we take a look at them, unless we've had a complaint and they've been classified as a non-responsible bidder, and as long as their bid, or their, I'm sorry, their bond is in order, then typically they're considered a reliable bidder.
I understand, and we have a policy in place on that, that catches in on those bonds when we have those problems, so I'm assuming, I guess I would assume that the bond was in place, I guess.
Yes, well, the bond will be in place, they'll meet all of our requirements as far as bidding, performance, bonding, and all of that. Like I said, there's very little you can do to reject bids unless you have good cause to do that. I don't have good cause, I, I don't know that there's anything that I should be concerned about, or the city should be concerned about them. I'm not aware of any pending issues that they have, certainly with Rapid City, outside of Rapid City, I don't know.
Well, yeah, I think in the past, when I've asked this question, I think it's not been a problem, so I don't really foresee a problem, but I just always have concerns when there's a new bidder that seems to be the lowest down in total pool by a fairly significant margin. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you. So the motion is to accept the base and?
Alternates one and four.
Alternates one and four.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to award the bid to First Dakota Enterprises, the base bid plus alternates one and four for a grand total of six hundred and ninety-five thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pauline. Under Mayor's items, we have an update on our goal one, under twenty-twelve, our strategic vision, and Jeff Carsrude. Did I say twenty-twelve? Twenty-twenty strategic plan, and I'll have him pull up the PowerPoint, I believe that you had a PowerPoint, Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay?
You've got it, you've got it, Fed, right?
Okay. Yep. Jim, could you make sure that the PowerPoint gets pulled up? Be back there. Caroline, can you see?
And maybe while they're doing that, you want to preface where we're at?
Absolutely. There we go. Just as a, as a means of introduction, Jeff Carsrude actually chairs one of two working committees at this point. If you remember, the, the city went through an exercise, as far as going out to the public, we had, I believe, over three hundred respondents to two basic questions that were asked, and those are, what do you want Rapid City to look like in the year twenty-twenty, and what do you want Rapid City to become by the year twenty-twenty? We went through lengthy discussions, we actually had groups that actually got together and actually what I will call wordsmith, the five different goals that eventually came forward, the city council approved, and if the council remembers, the goal was to actually move forward on the first two, and this is the presentation on goal number one. With that, Mr. Carsrude.
All right, my name is Jeff Carsrude, and about five months ago, the mayor asked us to roll up our sleeves as a group and put together a job strategy that would grow and sustain the Rapid City area through the year twenty-twenty. So we got to work, our group is comprised of very talented, diverse individuals with one thing in mind, growing good-paying jobs. At this time in our history, we must work harder, smarter, and together to create and retain really good-paying jobs, and believe me, we're competing with some very desperate states like California, Arizona, Pennsylvania, and we're also looking, we're also competing in, against very forward-looking cities or communities like Boise, Houston, Salt Lake City, Sioux Falls, and Fargo. Am I okay? As you can see listed, this group is, this group of nineteen very talented folks have come together with one single goal of making Rapid City a better place to live, work, and play. At this time, I'd like to take an opportunity to recognize any of the members of our committee, there's seven here, if you could please stand, and I want to thank you for your time and, 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 well, actually, we've got, yeah, we've got, well, we get, we've got four up here, four working folks up here, so we've got Jason, we've got, the mayor's been, been helping out, Mr. Davis and Mr. Kroger, so again, thank you very much for your time and efforts. First, by definition, I'm just going to, just going to show you exact, or read the[1751.15] First, by definition, I'm just gonna, just gonna show you exactly, or read the definition of what we've been instructed to do. By twenty-twenty, Rapid City will be recognized as a leader in attracting, expanding, and retaining diverse businesses that offer high, higher skilled and higher compensation employment opportunities. This will be evidenced by the growth that exceeds the national standards. We have a major advantage over many communities in that we are blessed with strong tourism numbers, retail, and a tremendous retail hub. But as you can see on this slide, there you go, we've got some lower troughs in some lower months. We must diversify and raise that tide. The Rapid City economy strongly resembles a camel's back. January through April, we see softer revenues, and from May through August, we steadily grow, resulting at the end of the Sturgis Rally. Then we soften up again, and then through Black Friday, from Black Friday through Christmas, we come roaring back. The question is, is can we raise the lower trough areas? And I think we can. Okay, what's already been done? In two thousand and four, a joint project between Governor Rounds, Initiative Twenty Ten, and Rapid City, the City of Rapid City and the Black Hills Vision, were hired, hired the Batel Group to show us what our potential was. What this study showed us is that we could achieve a technology corridor here in the Black Hills. It gave us a roadmap heavily influenced by the DUSL, which is the proposed Homestake Underground Science Laboratory. This will potentially give us over a thousand technology-based jobs in the Black Hills. But it's always a good time to revisit your goals and reassess them. We have had tremendous opportunity in the state of South Dakota based on our flexible, or our favorable tax climate, strong and willing workforce, and a solid fiscal responsible, fiscal responsibility. We now must, we now have most everyone on the same page from Governor Dugard, our mayor, our council, our economic development corporations, and you, the people. So we must act now. We are a central hub for, of about a five-state area, which includes over a dozen vibrant cities within that sphere. We already have momentum and would like to highlight a few of the successes Rapid City has had just over the last year. We added direct flights to Dallas-Fort Worth with existing flights already from Minneapolis, Denver, Salt Lake, Phoenix, Las Vegas, and Chicago. And soon, we'll be breaking ground and on a, an approximate twenty million dollar renovation to the airport to take our nineteen-seventies-looking airport into the current times. Opening in a few months, we have our, we have the Rapid City University Center on Elkvale Road centrally housing students from the South Dakota School of Mines, Black Hills State, Dakota State University, N A U, Western Dakota Tech, the University of South Dakota, and S D S U. This is a big deal, and most people don't realize it's happening. It'll be, it'll be happening in a few months. And the building, you know, the building is coming along great. This is gonna house thirty-six job positions. In February of this last year, K L Energy opened a lab in the Black Hills Business Incubator, which, which added fourteen new jobs. And at this time, I'd like to talk a little bit about the incubator. A lot of people don't know about the incubator. It's a business, it's a business development center located on the campus of the School of Mines and housing, housing startup jobs and oftentimes high-tech and, and, and companies that look at, at coming to our community but don't want to make the initial investment of real property just yet. Starting in twenty-twelve, we're gonna start receiving our first squadrons of unmanned drone reapers, drapers, drone reapers, I'm trying to do this quick, my kids have homework tonight, so. Reapers at the Ellsworth Air Force Base, which will add two hundred and eighty new positions, both military and civilian. A S I, which is subsidiary of General Electric, expanded their force to over four hundred jobs, bringing a hundred and ninety new jobs to Rapid City. This next one is a real feather in the cap of Rapid City. In October of this year, they opened, Caterpillar opened, and their engineering design center here, located also in the, in the Business Incubator, and will be adding over a hundred new engineering jobs here, just here in Rapid City. Deadwood Biofuels, now located in the prior Dakota Craft Facility on Old Folsom Road, is, is, is a new biofuel manufacturing operation, creating up to twenty-five new positions. This is another great story. One of our locally-owned manufacturing companies named Simcom, which is a very high-quality electronic control company serving worldwide customers, has recently expanded and has purchased the vacant Sanmina S C I facility by the Rushmore Mall. This will add a hundred and sixty-two new jobs to Rapid City. Now, that's where we've been, and yes, we think that's pretty good, but we think we can do better. Al Raymond is going to tell us exactly where, from here, where we're gonna go from here, so.
Good evening. Do you need my name for the record or anything like that? Al Reban, speaking for the Goal One Subcommittee of the Twenty-Twenty Strategic Plan. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff. Thank you for being here, and I'm glad to have the opportunity to share with you some of the ideas that our Goal Number One Committee has had. In order for us to do better, the key is we must focus with vision. What exactly does this mean? Well, vision is what is required for us to see into the future, to anticipate economic trends, and to see job creation needs. Focus, on the other hand, is the ability to see into the core of that vision and to understand what we, as a city and community, can do to align our efforts with our vision of the future. One of the first things that we did on the committee was refocus our thoughts around what our economic region was. Let me see. Two more times, okay. First, you'll see, we have an elliptical here that goes from two hundred and fifty to three hundred and forty miles. That was drawn by the Batel Group, looking at what we might look at as an economic region for their high-tech vision for the DUSL and the Technology Corridor. On a job creation basis here in Rapid City, though, we feel that we've got two other areas that we want to focus on more. One is the seventy-five mile region. We think that that is the most crucial region, the one where we are a real major, the major economic player. Drawing around from that, another two hundred miles still brings us into an area of the country where we are still probably the major hub for a lot of that area. When we moved to the Batel, we're crossing Sioux Falls, Billings, Bismarck, all of those other cities, and that's reaching out a little farther than we think we need to. This is the area that we believe that we could be the major player in. In that area, and in this region, we have key economic assets. We've got existing businesses and industries. We've got specific industry clusters that show a lot of promise. One, firearms. We also see an increasing interest in this area from motorcycle accessory manufacturers, motorcycle custom builders. In this area, we have great assets to rely on: Ellsworth Air Force Base, the promise of DUSL in the future. We've got the work and the efforts of the Rapid City Economic Development, the Black Hills Business Center helping to bring business and economic improvement to this area. We've got regional health, we're a great hub for health. We also have fantastic air transportation, Rapid City Regional Airport. We've got great higher education with Black Hills State University, good technical education with Western Dakota Tech, and with the School of Mines and Technology, with the research and the money that comes into there, that's just a real gem for Rapid City and our chances to improve our economic status. The question is, how will we leverage these assets to anchor the creation of higher-wage jobs? Our goals for two thousand and eleven. First, as you saw in the beginning of this presentation by Jeff, we've had a lot of successes in twenty-ten. And during the economic downturn, we've been more than holding our own and preparing ourselves to grow into the future. Using twenty-ten, we've created a baseline document to judge where we are and where we've been. This document that the committee's created will also be the baseline and the measuring stick to determine how we will measure success into the future. We started to track local commercial real estate properties and trends with some powerful new software at the Economic Development Partnership. We've got a good working relationship with the office, Governor's Office of Economic Development, with the governor himself, and we are very encouraged by his making economic development in the reshuffling of the cabinet a standalone position with a greater emphasis on economic development in the state. Focus on a select group of industry clusters and develop a strategy based on target industries. I'm gonna spend just a few minutes on that. I think that's one of the most important things that this group is developing and coalescing around. Do you ever wonder why industries such as textiles, autos, computers, aeronautics, movies, they tend to wind up in certain parts of the country, especially in concentrated numbers, and you seldom see them evenly dispersed around? Different industries require different mixes of raw materials, markets, capital, worker's skill sets, legal, tax environments, transportation, among others. But what they do is create an economic atmosphere, so to speak, that is conducive to their industry's success. And when they find that, they tend to cluster together. Our mission is to look at our existing assets that we talked about earlier, along with changes that we might be able to make in those assets. Then, how we can match these up with our own select business and industry targets so that we find a natural and beneficial relationship leading to increased job prospects for our citizens here in Rapid City. Together in partnership with Black Hills Vision, we're developed, we're working on a study to look at small businesses, particularly those with around ten employees. What creates their success? What we could do to help, help strengthen that success? Also looking at strengthening the existing base of companies. When we look to develop and see who these clusters are, we have to first look at who's already here. There must be some reason they're here to begin with, some strength, some natural, natural advantages that we have. We want to look at those so we can leverage those, strengthen those, and enhance those, bringing more of those types of businesses into the area. Ultimately, our goal: increase the number of jobs, quality business prospect leads, focus on higher wages, and better jobs for our people. Who are we? This is the group, the committee makeup, these are the people that are on there. Jeff listed their names individually earlier. These are the type of things that they do here in your community. I think it's a group well-structured to help bring some focus and direction into this Goal Number One Committee. The focus of the Goal Number One is attracting quality jobs. We believe primary jobs are the economic engine of the regional year-round economy. We need to grow these year-round, high-paying jobs with a solid proactive development plan. And that's what our goal and our committee hope to do. Thank you for your time, consideration. We are open, Jeff and I, for any questions or discussion.
Very good. Thank you, Al. Thank you, Jeff. We certainly appreciate it. And for all the committee members that are here, and all those that have served, I truly appreciate the effort that they put, the time and the effort they put in this, and I know the council is very much appreciative of all their efforts. Any questions or concerns? Let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
I thank you guys for all your work, council members and your group. I also am very pleased to see that you're taking a closer look at small businesses with ten or less employees. I've always said, and will always say, there's something to build on in South Dakota. We did, I did do a seminar with economic development. Some people came in, and we're talking about that the thing of the future's not, it's to keep big in industry, and if you can get that, that's good. But basically, stay with the medium people, or build the small people up to the mediocre, and it makes a huge difference. And those kind of jobs last a lot longer than something that can be taken out and taken many, I've seen, when that industry is taken out, and loss of many jobs. Where in this case, you can build on and actually put focus and strength in South Dakota of what we're good at. And I appreciate you guys moving that forward, because it's been a concern of many of the small business owners, that we've put enough time and effort into bringing people, other people in, and bigger industries, but what happened to the people here in South Dakota or even Rapid City, that there's big assets here that we could put a little money into or, or time into with economic development. So I appreciate you guys moving forward with that, and a lot of the small business owners will appreciate you as well. You guys are very hardworking, and you can really retain their assets and move forward. So we appreciate that help.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Al, Jeff, your team, thank you all very, very much. You guys have just put a ton of work into this, and if, if this isn't a prime example of an eighty-twenty rule, I don't know what is. The twenty percent have done eighty percent of the work, and I can attest to that because I fit into the eighty percent not getting the work part done. These guys have worked their tail off, they truly have. My compliments to the mayor, first of all, for putting these committees together. I think that, the fact that we had the vision and asked to bring this is a step in the right direction. And certainly, my compliments to everyone that's been involved in the committee. Your time and energy is, has just been superb and above and beyond. I think we have to remember, for the most part, everybody there volunteered to do this, hired city employees for the most part. There, there are those of you that are giving of your time and energy of your business to do it, and I think that's, that needs to be noted, that, that you are, in fact, giving of your time. But additionally, I think it needs to be noted that you're local. We didn't hire a consultant to come in from outside that can take his briefcase and his opinion and jump on a plane and leave us. You guys have to live with what you brought forth, and, and I think that also deserves to be noted. So with all of that, I truly thank you, and I hope that as this moves forward, that we continue to take your findings and are able to capitalize on them.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, look for a motion to acknowledge. Oh, I'm sorry, let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I see Mr. Carsrude, and I see Mr. Raymond at a lot of places, and I just want to take the opportunity, you guys work hard, we appreciate, and I think that the city appreciates the hard work you put in on all the things you do, not just this. I see you guys, you're involved in a lot of stuff in the community and trying to make this community a better place to live. I just want to take the time to thank you for working so hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, comments. Anything else? Look for a motion to acknowledge.
Thank you.
We have a motion and second to acknowledge, and discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Jeff, Al, thank you. And I like how he put that, when he said that you voluntarily, you actually volunteered for this. I will tell you, it was a little bit of arm twisting, I know that, so we certainly appreciate you stepping up on the plate.
And quick timetable, we'll have a final report in June for you. We're already on the agenda, so.
Very good. Thank you both so much for your hard work. Item number seventy-eight, this is Alderman Ron Kroger, setting of a twenty-twelve meeting. I think you were looking at the twenty-second of February, is that correct?
Correct, Mayor. I'd like to put a motion on the table that we hold a special, not a special, but a twenty-twelve committee meeting at six-thirty prior to our council meeting on the twenty-second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Then if I could have the floor, Mayor.
Discussion on that motion. Mr. Kroger.
Thank you. The twenty-twelve subcommittee met last week and went through a funding schedule of the twenty-twelve projects, and I think that was all, those were all sent out to you for you to look at and for discussion on the twenty-second, and hopefully for approval so we can move forward. So I appreciate your support and the motion on the floor.
Very good. I know the spreadsheets were sent out late this afternoon, so if you haven't had the opportunity to see them, I know that they're out. Pauline and I basically were running through numbers to, trying to verify that everything was correct, so, but I know that Trudy from my office sent those out for council leadership. So we have a motion and second to set a twenty-twelve committee of the whole for six-thirty on February twenty-second, which is a Tuesday. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Ellis, twenty-twelve update.
Just a couple of updates for the city council. The Canyon Lake Dam reconstruction, the design contract has been approved, that's about two hundred and four thousand dollars. The airport terminal expansion project was awarded. There was three-point-five million dollars that was allocated out of twenty-twelve, that has been committed. And then finally, the main street square, three-point-five million dollars was allocated out of twenty-twelve, and a little over two-point-nine million has been awarded with that project. And that's all I have.
Okay. Could we have a motion to acknowledge? Okay, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge, any discussion on that motion? I would just call the council's attention to the link. I would just ask you to take a look at the new format as far as the report, and I know that Robert mentioned that this is his attempt to basically simplify it, instead of having twelve or thirteen pages, he's condensed it down to one sheet. Is there, unless there's any concerns about that, I think, Robert, this makes a heck of a lot easier to track, so thank you, we certainly appreciate that. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge, and discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Seventy-two, please. That is to acknowledge a raffle request from Western Dakota Tech. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Round of the public hearing items, these are items seventy-three through eighty-four inclusive. Chair, look for motion, open the public hearing on items seventy-three through eighty-four inclusive, please.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. I do not have any speaker request forms. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak to any items? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak to any items 73 through 84? If not, we do need to leave this open for this part of the meeting. So we're on to the continued public hearing consent items, items 73 through 76. Marsha, do we expect to pull any of those? How about from the council? If not, Chair will look for a motion to approve the continued public hearing consent items, items 73 through 76, per the recommendations on the printed agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That does take us to item, takes us to the end of the public comment. Let's see, takes us to the end of the continued public hearing consent items. We need a motion to close the public hearing on items 73 through 84.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and second, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're on to the consent public hearing items. These are items 77 through 82 inclusive. And I would ask if any of these items need to be pulled from the consent calendar. We're dealing with items 77 through 82 inclusive. If so, please turn on your light. Seeing none. Chair will look for a motion to approve the consent public hearing items, items 77 through 82.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman, Bonnie Peterson. Oh, can Mike, Mike, please? I think, that's right, thank you.
Sorry. I believe at the last meeting that we had wanted to separate out this lady that came in on number 82 on the assessment rolls. We wanted that brought to our attention.
Okay.
So I don't know if I was too late to pull it or not, but for number 82.
Well, I'll tell you what, if you could please make a substitute, why don't we do this? Why don't you make a substitute motion to, Jason, we just need to, because, let's see, did we actually vote on the consent calendar? We have not, have we not? Okay. Chair will basically treat this as notice that we need to pull this item, so we will be taking up item number 82 separately. So currently, the motion on the floor is to approve the consent public hearing items, items 77 through 81 inclusive. Any discussion on those? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 82, Deb, could you please read that in for us, please?
82 is approved resolution number 2010-172B, levying assessment for cleanup of miscellaneous property. Move approval? Is that what it is?
Yeah, that's fine. We have a motion and a second for approval, discussion on that motion. Let's go to Pauline. You know, there was some discussion, I believe, at the last council meeting as far as there was a citizen had some concerns about an assessment. Are they included in here or not?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe that they are included in here, but I would like to actually defer that to Mr. Barbier because he is the one that is aware of that complaint.
Mr. Barbier, is.
Yes, Mayor.
Mic, please.
Hmm.
Okay, whoa. Got to wait for it.
Okay. That was the property at 1020 Haynes. Ms. Rolfe, I believe, was the lady's name, the property owner that appeared. There are a number of attachments because this is the, since July of '09, this is the third time this property has been abated, as well as we have had three other issues for weeds and debris where that property has dealt with code enforcement, where the property owner cleaned it up themselves. So there, there's quite a history of issues with that property. And that, the assessment at this point is $262, and it's part of, part of the assessment roll with the other items.
Okay, very good. Bonnie, did that address your question? Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second on the floor for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the end of the consent public hearing calendar. We're on to the non-consent public hearing items, items 83 and 84. 83, let's see, Deb, do you read those in, or is that Alderman Quaker?
One.
Why don't you, go ahead, Deb.
Okay. 83 is authorize a mayor and finance office to sign the waiver right to protest a future assessment of the installation of curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlight, conduit, water, sewer, and pavement along South Airport Road and the section line highway. And located at 23299 South Airport Road, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, any discussion on that motion? Item number 83, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. 84, please.
84 is a request by Dream Design International for a variance to the subdivision regulation to waive the requirement to install curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlight, conduit, water, sewer, and pavement as per chapter 16.16 of the Rapid City Minnesota Code, located at 23299 South Airport Road. And I acknowledge applicant's request for a variance for sidewalks and application, app, I can't read that.
An approval?
And balance its request with stipulations. Appkins.
Yep, let's go to Marsha for clarification.
I'm sorry, and there was a writing error on my part. So recommendation is to acknowledge the applicant's withdrawal of the request for the sidewalk variance, and then to approve the balance of the items with stipulations.
Is that right with the motion maker?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. There again, remember, the bill list will come in after the executive session, so I'm going to go to Jason Green. I, where did Mr. Green go? Mr. Green? There we go. I assume that we need an executive session?
Yes, and it be for the purposes permitted by STCL 1-25-2.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
Hold on.
We have a motion and second to go into executive session for purposes permitted by STCL 1-25-2. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We are in executive session. We have a motion, come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're out of executive session. Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mayor. I ask the council to direct the city attorney to proceed in accordance with the discussion in executive session on the litigation matter.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Bonnie Peterson.
Is this the company that we were just discussing about?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to vote no on this because I think we should stand up for our constituents.
Okay, thank you. Motion on the floor, one more time, Jason, is to.
Direct the city attorney to proceed in accordance with the discussion in executive session on the litigation matter.
Very good. It's a motion on the floor. Everyone clear on that? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
No.
Okay. Was there anybody else? We had two noes.
No.
Hey, let's do a quick roll call. I'm sorry.
Aye.
Quaker.
No.
Wa.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Mason.
Aye.
Peterson. Wyffenbach. Davis.
Aye.
Hattcock. Kroger.
Motion passes, 73 vote. Okay, thank you, everyone. Mr. Green.
I believe you're on to the bill list.
Yes. Pauline, you have one correction.
I do, sir. I would like to have an amendment to the bill that is currently selected for Pennington County Clerk of Courts and have the payee changed to Costello Porter Law Firm in the amount of $94.35.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to approve the bill list as amended, which